Kevin, help us.
You have a check for me?
I have cash for me.
I can give you thirteen dollars and give you seven later. Does that work?
Give me ten. I'll put my...
I call this December fourteenth, 2017, regular meeting of the Fairfax County School Board to order. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance, a moment of silence, and the performance of the National Anthem by the Lee High School Lancers Singers under the direction of Justin Hartzell.
The flag of the United States of America and to the Republic where it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much, very talented Lee High School singers. We appreciate it. And thank you for the pre-meeting concert. We appreciate that as well. And I believe that Deirdre Levery is here, the principal of Lee High School. Thank you. And thank you, parents, for bringing your children tonight and for letting us borrow them. They did love the job. Thank you. In order to comply with Section 2.2-3712D of the Code of Virginia, it is necessary for the Board to certify that since the Fairfax County School Board convened a closed meeting on December fourteenth, 2017, to the best of each member's knowledge, only public business matters lawfully exempted from open meeting requirements, and only such public business matters as were identified in the motion convening the closed meeting were heard, discussed, or considered by the school board during the closed meeting. Is there a motion? Moved by Mrs. Schultz, seconded by Ms. Evans. All of those in favor? Okay, that is Evans, Wilson, McElveen, Corbett Sanders, Strauss, Moon, Hines, Schultz, Keys, Gamara.
Darnett Kofex.
Darnett Kofex, abstentions, Polczek, and Ms. McLaughlin. Thank you. That motion passes. A few announcements before we begin tonight's meeting. First, I would like to recognize the City of Fairfax School Board members who are with us this evening, and the superintendent as well, I see. Chairman John Buttram is here. There's John. Dr. Mitch Sutterfield. Mitch is here. I didn't see Toby, is Toby Sorenson here? Coming. And I understand that Carolyn Pitchis is coming? Yes. And the esteemed superintendent of Fairfax City, Dr. Phyllis Pajardo, is here. Thank you all very much. If you would like to review a copy of the agenda and any agenda item that is being discussed tonight, that information is on the table by the auditorium entrance. Tonight's agenda is available by going to the School Board on the FCPS homepage and selecting Board Docs under upcoming School Board meetings. The meeting is also being streamed live online. Select School Board from the full menu, then click on the Watch Live button on the School Board Meetings website. Please turn off or silence your cellphone. And now I will call on Ms. Fetaconda for announcements.
Thank you, Madam Chair. January is going to be National Mentoring Month. National Mentoring Month highlights mentoring and the positive impact it can have on young lives. This month-long outreach campaign focuses national attention on the need for mentors, as well as how each of us, individuals, businesses, government agencies, schools, faith communities, and nonprofits, can work together to increase the number of mentors and assure brighter futures for our young people. Positive relationships between mentors and their mentees have been shown to encourage young people to stay in school, achieve personal growth, believe in themselves, and live up to their potential. National Mentoring Month marks its seventeenth anniversary in 2018 with the theme "In Real Life," encouraging citizens to volunteer as mentors.
Thank you. Next is citizen participation. Tonight, six citizens have signed up to address the Board, and we also have two video testimonies. Speakers are requested to limit their remarks to not more than three minutes. The School Board will not hear statements involving issues that have been scheduled for public hearings, such as capital improvement program, budget, and boundaries. Complaints regarding individual students or school-based employees should be directed to the appropriate school principal or other school official. Speakers should refrain from using personally identifiable information in connection with an individual student. Speakers are expected to deliver their comments with the decorum and respect appropriate to the conduct of our public business meeting. Please be mindful that there are often young children in attendance at these meetings or watching at home. So language should be appropriate for all age levels. Thank you for your cooperation, and thanks to those who have come out to speak to us tonight. Our first speaker is Lily Barris.
My name is Lily Barris, and I'm a senior at what is to be known as Justice High School. I'm excited to see the changes the Board has decided to make to the 2018-2019 calendar year, and I applaud the changes to the calendar, but the change I am most looking forward to is the name change of my high school. As a student who has been actively involved in the name change issue for over two years, I wanted to take this opportunity to thank each of you for your hard work on this issue and all the time you took to engage with advocates on both sides. I know it wasn't easy, and I truly applaud your work on this issue and all other issues regarding our schools. I especially want to thank Ms. Evans tonight for her unwavering support despite how difficult this subject has been in her community. I'm thankful that all of you had the courage to take a vote and change the name. Now that the decision has been made and the implementation plan has begun being implemented, I've noticed a shift in my school community. There's a newfound unity and excitement among many students that didn't exist even a month ago. I've noticed kids starting to get excited at the prospect of choosing a new mascot and logo and getting new uniforms. Under the leadership of Ms. Gross, along with the guidance of the Board and Dr. Braybrand, I believe that our community will look forward to a new future as Justice High School. As a senior getting ready to move into a pretty exciting transition myself, watching my school go through a transformation like this has been really interesting. I'm glad to see everyone begin to look forward to an exciting and equitable future, and thank you all for your help in making that a reality. Thank you.
Thank you. The next speaker is Susan Danowitz.
Good evening, School Board. I am so happy to be here to congratulate you for this amazing progress. The estimates regarding Justice High School prepared by the FCPS staff seem better detailed, and the transition timeline, including changes to each of the computer systems over the summer of 2018, seem well thought through. Thank you. Thank you. I am glad to hear that the goals for this change are not merely to replace current building and sports materials that need the name removed, but to alleviate some of the startling inequities between our richest high schools and justices' just-as-deserving children. Studies have shown that minority children score lower on standardized exams when they are asked to identify their minority status prior to testing. Walking under the old name of Jeb Stuart each day was a similar reminder of second-class citizenship. Removing this problematic name and hanging the shining new letters of justice will give a boost to our children who have felt the Confederate name's thousand small cuts for so many decades. This name fix will be a gentle boost to test scores for many years to come, and as such is worth every penny of the $450,000, maybe? I am proud that my community recognizes our responsibility to the children under our care. I have heard grumbles about the extent of private fundraising thus far for justices' renaming. While I deeply believe that today's FCPS is morally obligated to repair the error of our past, I am enthusiastic about the new name and wish to support it. The initial costs were so inflated that made me keep my wallet in my pocket, and I am still nervous that various boosters, several of whom are led by individuals deeply opposed to the name change, will inflate needs in order to inflict maximum pain on a process they didn't want. I also noticed that none of the costs seem to be amortized appropriate to their early replacement. If a $200 uniform that lasts four years is being replaced after two years, only half that cost, $100, is actually the cost of the renaming. The other half is just a normal replacement cycle. The other reason I have hesitated to make my donation thus far is the need for this fundraising process to offer recognition. The FCPS Foundation lists on their website the donors who donate as little as $20. If one donates to an NPR station, you get a tote bag. Jefferson, for $100,000, allows an individual or group naming rights to a classroom, while a $100,000 donation earns a plaque on a seat in the auditorium. If FCPS wants those who support the name change to donate, they need more than just a button that says Donate. You, the School Board, need to authorize the appropriate relationships between we, who want to help, and your staff experts for a fundraising campaign to maturely coax out donations.
In closing, my six-year-old son asked a National Honor Student Society volunteer who he was, and the teen answered he was from Jeb Stuart. My little first grader reported happily. I told him, "You mean Justice High School." Our next generation is so ready for this new era. Thank you.
Thank you. The next speaker is George Waters.
As a part of the school schedule, I want to thank you toward implementing a name Justice High School next year. When President George Bush spoke of the opening of the Museum of the African-American History and Culture, he said, quote, "A great nation does not hide its history; it faces its flaws and it corrects them." When Governor Larry Hogan agreed to the removal of the statue of the justice who authored the infamous Dred Scott decision, he said, "While we cannot hide from history, nor should we, the time has come to make clear the difference between properly acknowledging our past and glorifying the darkest chapters of our history." Most members of this Board clearly understood this, and many of your statements were equally inspiring. What also was inspiring was to see a young African-American girl, a student at Jeb Stuart, having the courage to testify before you, but doing so in tears, as to what it was like to be at a school that continues to honor a Confederate leader. I thought a lot about that girl and thousands like her across the country, and I think many of you did as well. I was glad to see in your latest work session that the absurdly inflated cost estimate of $800,000 is now closer to $400,000. I have been telling this Board and your staff for a while that those higher figures could not be accurate. I will never understand why that analysis could not have been done two years ago. I will also tell you I'm not seeing how the cost can even be $400,000. I am submitting to you an analysis of just one example, the boys' baseball team, where the figures appear to be 100% to 250% higher than I can find, including getting quotes from Sports Plus and Chantilly, which is a reputable company that supplies uniforms to many schools in Fairfax County. During Monday's work session, you expressed concern that only $15,000 had been raised. I will tell you why so little has been raised. We haven't started a fundraising campaign yet. We said we would need to see a real budget on which we could base a fundraising campaign. Fundraising campaigns must have well-thought-out goals and strategies based in part on the amount to be raised. Most importantly, we needed to partner with FCPS so we can have legitimacy in approaching Fortune 500 corporations, regional companies, and philanthropic entities. I would like to see temporary FCPS letterhead created with a subheading on it saying something like "The Committee for Justice High School," and an advisory committee on the letterhead, ideally with people like Governor Terry McAuliffe, Congressman Jerry Conley, Supervisor Penny Gross, Superintendent Braybrand, Principal Penny Gross, one of Thurgood Marshall's children, members of the Mendez family, Democrats and Republicans, local and Hispanic African-American leaders, and the business community. We then must develop a case statement for philanthropy, which also serves as a PR document. We must develop marketing proposals for individual donors that are tied to the potential donor's affinities and their ability to pay. We will begin this process, but again, must have the legitimacy to do so, so that it is not George Waters, or Debbie Ratcliffe, or Stephen Spitz approaching the donors, but an entity that the donor can see on an institutionalized basis. That is the next step. We do not need your staff or much of their time, but simply your cooperation and your endorsement. Thank you.
Thank you. The next speaker is Tina Williams.
Happy holidays, School Board members and Dr. Braybrand. I'm Tina Williams, president of Fairfax County Federation of Teachers, and I'll be speaking on behalf of my members concerning the calendar. FCFT has strongly advocated and fought for paying teachers in the month of August. We are excited that employees will be paid at the end of August for their work. Resolving this matter tells my members that you do not only hear their concerns, but that FCPS cares and will work with us to resolve any issues. Recognizing that every suggestion could not be included in one calendar, I believe this is a fair compromise to the many recommendations that have been offered by School Board members, employees, teacher associations, FCCPTA, other organizations, and this community. I thank you all for your time and diligence in creating this new version of the calendar. Some highlights. Two consecutive teacher workdays before the start date. Major religious observations being noted in the calendar promotes community awareness and inclusion in school-related planning. School Planning Day, following by a teacher workday, and two full teacher workdays at the end of a quarter allow some time for parent-teacher conferences, completing grades, and teacher planning time, but will likely not be enough during this constricted time where critical duties must be performed by teachers prior to quarter ending. Please keep this in mind for the end of every quarter. This consideration suggests that you value a premier workforce. This can go a long way in attracting and retaining employees, decreasing stress and workload issues, and rebuilding that employee morale. The three-day holiday for Thanksgiving suggests a culture that promotes positive morale for employees and the community. Protecting that two-week winter break does the same. Some School Board members, along with FCFT, are concerned about the three-hour early release. I'm concerned about additional stress this place is on school operations to provide lunch and a time that is compressed, students that already struggle with adjusting to changes in their schedule, the level of learning that occurs on a shortened day in a compressed class period across elementary, middle, and high school levels, and the impact on our community. I ask FCPS to please monitor the impact of the three-hour early release and its effectiveness. We want to honor the caring culture that is being cultivated here. Making Veterans Day a holiday has been suggested by School Board members. This county has many teachers that are veterans, or their spouses are veterans, along with parents and family members in this community. Including their thoughts and input in the discussion would be beneficial. During the work session, Chase Ramey said 6,000 sub requests have been submitted since the beginning of the year. Reviewing the reasons for these requests and defining underlying factors could be very helpful as we create a comprehensive, optimal calendar in the future. In terms of subs, let's pay our retired, experienced teachers fairly, and they will return. Thank you.
Thank you. The next speaker is Kevin Hickerson.
Greetings, Superintendent Braybrand, Chairwoman Strauss, and School Board members. I'm Kevin Hickerson, president of the Fairfax Education Association, and I am speaking on behalf of my members tonight on the 2018-19 calendar. In all my years working for FCPS, there are few topics that rival the calendar discussion. Employees, parents, students, community members, all have an opinion on what days should be holidays, what days should the school year start and end, where to place work... holidays, what days should the school year start and end, where to place workdays, and of course, the most important question, how many snow days do we actually have? Of these constituencies, often these constituencies are at cross purposes with each other and themselves, making the task of what should be done even more difficult for you as a board. I would like to thank FCPS for including FEA in the process this year and would extend an offer of assistance in the creation of future calendars. Here's what I've heard during this year's discussion that I think can guide you in making decisions for future discussions in your final decision tonight. For future calendar discussions, begin the conversation earlier and with community input before making any major changes. That way, whatever committee is brought together to help in creating the calendar can take into account what changes are possible. An open and honest discussion about why FCPS might want to make changes will go a long way in showing that the community that you value their feedback. Second, as was said in testimony last week, keep the major changes to a minimum so that people can adapt. With close to 190,000 children, countless parents, and over 26,000 employees, big changes can be difficult. FCPS is so large that we can't do a 180 without serious whiplash. Heck, even doing a 90 or a 45 can lead to headaches. Lastly, starting the school year earlier might be a good practice overall, but we need to take into consideration the federal government's unofficial August hiatus since a sizable portion of our school population are children of government workers. I know we have a large government presence because, as a teacher, I've had to chase down those impact aid forms. In short, our location as a county might make it difficult for us to adjust without a major shift in thinking on multiple levels. For tonight's calendar, thank you for taking out the blackout dates for employees. FEA looks forward to having a conversation, and yes, even more committee work if possible to tackle the issues of substitutes and leave usage in the county. The FEA also supports the employee calendar starting on a Monday instead of a Friday, as proposed on Calendar D, making the Wednesday around Thanksgiving a day off and keeping the two-week break for winter. We also need to make sure our employees will be paid in August this upcoming school year. The FEA is supportive of an 11-month pay period that includes August. We would also be supportive of working on a plan now or in the future that includes some sort of recognition of Veterans Day. Finally, if we are going to invest the time and effort to do more professional development with early release days, the FEA sees that the best option is a three-hour early release as more reasonable for both students and teachers. We need to have time in order to make a difference in overall student learning and achievement by utilizing the professionals we have in the classroom to share their knowledge with the staff. The FEA knows that FCPS is reviewing how professional development is being handled in the county. We look forward to working with you on how to make our educators the best, but know that if we fall back into the same routines that do not work for professional development, the FEA will be reluctant to support these early releases in the future. Again, happy holidays, and we look forward to working with you in the new year.
Thank you. Norman Hall is our last speaker.
Good evening, Chairman Strauss, members of the school board, and happy Hanukkah. My name is Norm Hall, and I am the advocacy chair of the Fairfax County Special Education PTA. As 2017 draws to a close, I want to express appreciation. Since we had our launch meeting in April, members of SEPTA have enjoyed the process of getting acquainted with new and continuing members of the Fairfax County School Board. Also, it has been a pleasure to introduce ourselves to Superintendent Brayban, Assistant Superintendent Johnson, and key members of her staff. We appreciated your attendance at our first general meeting of this school year, opportunities to speak at board meetings, and engagement at meetings at the advisory committee for students with disabilities. We enjoyed networking opportunities at the mental wellness conference and discussion at the community conversations held in each of the five FCPS regions, not to mention the series of other public meetings and seminars. After so many meetings, it is clear to me that we as SEPTA are well on our way to establishing our identity as a reliable partner as we work on fulfilling our mission, which is, from the back of the T-shirts, empowering and connecting families, students, and educators to ensure students with disabilities develop their full potential as individuals and community members. There's a simple formula: As you speak, we listen; as we speak, you listen. Lately, we have been emphasizing inclusion as part of the One Fairfax Policy and Inclusive Schools Week. We have spoken with many voices, and we know that you have heard us. Tonight, we offer support for the establishment of a new AAP center at Lanier Middle School based on the understanding that there are many exceptional students in the city of Fairfax for whom their needs will be better met as a result. Anytime plans are put in place for exceptional students in FCPS buildings, we know that commitments to inclusion and to addressing the achievement gaps for students with disabilities can be honored through implementation with administrators, teachers, other staff, and parents as partners. As 2018 begins, SEPTA is committed to doing our part to develop solutions at the regional level to better serve the needs of all students. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Now, we have two video submissions. The first is presented by Debbie Ratliff and the second by Jonathan Allen, so we will hear the first video from Debbie Ratliff. And by the way, we can see them on the screens here in front of us, which you can't see as well as behind us.
Thank you. October 26, 2017, the Fairfax County School Board voted to rename Jeb Stuart High School as Justice High School. The new name reflects our community, our community's values, and supports the One Fairfax Resolution. The implementation plan published on Board Docs Friday and presented at the school board meeting tonight outlines changes to begin in the summer of 2018 and the new name, Justice High School, to be in place for the start of the 2018-19 school year. Implementation will include recognition of Justice Thurgood Marshall, Barbara Rose Johns, and Colonel Louis Jimenez Jr., and preservation of the school's history. The implementation plan also includes a cost analysis that shows estimated costs between $453,000 and $428,000 and states that most of these prices are still considered estimates and have not been competitively bid. We believe additional savings should be realized through the bid process. In fact, once a budget is created to include total support through the various boosters over FY18 and 19 and to include verified figures for all costs, not estimates, the total will go down even more. We know this because we're not the first school district to remove a Confederate name from a public school. High school and middle school name changes in school districts in Texas and Virginia cost less than $200,000 per school, an average of $171,000 per school in Texas and $136,000 in Virginia, and includes uniforms, equipment bags, and other materials. This is half of the estimate in the December 2017 FCPS Implementation Plan. Houston Independent School District changed the names of seven schools named for Confederates to better reflect the district's values and diversity, three high schools and four middle schools, for an average of $171,428 per school. The process in Houston began in January 2016, and the new names were in place at all seven schools at the start of the 2016-17 school year, eight months later. In March 2016, the school district in Hariko, Virginia, removed the name of a segregationist. The middle school's new name became official four months later, July 1, 2016, in time for the start of the 2016-17 school year. All changes reflect each community and each community's values. The new name, Justice High School, reflects our community and our community's values. Our community supports the One Fairfax Resolution and equity in our public schools. Thank you.
Thank you. The next video is presented by Jonathan Allen.
The Citizens of Government for Integrity LLC, a nonpartisan group, is now petitioning for the Mason District recall of Sandy Evans for distracting the school board from its educational mission, violating the community's trust following an unwanted agenda.
Can you give me the petition, and I'll get back to you later? Thanks. Have a good day. Wow, that made Sandy Evans sound really scary. Maybe I should read this petition and see what it's about. Petition is a series of 12 charges. The first of one is this: In 2015 and 2016, she led the effort to amend Fairfax County School Board Regulation 8170 to add a provision expanding the basis governing the procedure for changing a school name. This sounds like Sandy's job. Let me do some research on this. I found this in Dakota, Virginia, in 22.1-78. "The school board may adopt bylaws and regulations not inconsistent with state statutes and regulations of the Board of Education for its own government, for the management of its official business, and for the supervision of schools, including but not limited to the proper discipline of students and including their conduct to going to and returning from school." So this is her job. Let's double-check on how she did her job. I see here on December 17, 2015, she proposed a policy amendment to 18170.5. Mr. Moon seconded it, and guess what? It was, you passed unanimously. Sandy Evans was doing her job as well as others. Some who voted that day are no longer on the board. When I look at the board today, all I see is faithful public servants, including Mr. Moon, Elizabeth Schultz, Megan McLaughlin, Tom Wilson, and of course, Sandy Evans. It would be a crime to sign this petition against Sandy Evans, a faithful public servant. My position is no recall, not now, not ever, and I suggest everybody else do the same.
That ends the public comment part of our meeting. Thank you very much for those who came out to speak to us. Next, we have student representative matters I call on Ms. Vettaconda.
Thank you, Madam Chair. So I'll be addressing the issue of the calendar. So I support the current Calendar E that is on the floor for tonight. In particular, Calendar E has a unique feature that I'd like to draw your attention to: More balanced quarters. So first and third quarter are 46 days, and second and fourth quarters are 44. In Calendar D, quarter one is 47, whereas quarter four is 43. And I know it doesn't sound like a lot, but those four days do make a difference for students. That's almost an entire week. That's an entire week that is sometimes spent in completely testing when they could have been, because it's at the end of the quarter, so a lot of projects are due when they could have been learning instead. At Monday's work session, I advocated for first quarter end date on October 31. As many of you know, November 1 is a particularly stressful time for our seniors, and having an excessively long first quarter compared to second quarter can rush students who are in semester classes and cause undue stress over holiday break. But moving the start date of the calendar just a little bit might help with that. And on the issue of holiday breaks, I think that we also need to look at whether our students are actually getting a break. Homework during the break and tests on the first day back, particularly for kids in AP and IB classes, turn our new three-day Thanksgiving, our spring break and winter break, which are supposed to be several days of relaxation and family time, into a very stressful time for our students. And looking at the calendar for next year, we also need to focus on the implementation and making sure our holidays are actually holidays and not just workdays for our students. Regarding the three-hour early releases in the calendar, I expressed at the work session that students are concerned about how productive academic time will be on the days that students are essentially bussed to school just for the morning and bussed home before or right after lunch. I think it would be an interesting idea to explore as a board the feasibility of a telelearn day for students when they can collaborate on group projects, work on extended individual papers and projects, and receive additional instruction from home via Blackboard or Google Classroom or something else. This would be a way to potentially alleviate the academic effects of having three-hour early releases while still being able to have that professional development time for our teachers. For future calendars, I urge this board to really look at the feasibility about starting two weeks before Labor Day. At the recent SAC meetings, many of the delegates expressed support for having two additional weeks before the winter snow days to get ahead on content related to national exams, in particular for AP and IB exams, so that they're not rushing the night before the exams to cover all the content and can instead spend a week on review and really synthesizing the content for those essay and in-depth portions of the exams. However, for tonight, I really support Calendar E and urge you all to do so, and happy holidays to everyone.
Thank you very much. Next on the agenda is Membership Analysis Trends and Capital Improvement Program, and I call on Dr. Brayban for the introduction.
Yes, I have Jeff Plattenberg, our Assistant Superintendent for Facilities and Transportation. He'll have a brief presentation for you.
Thank you very much, Dr. Brayban, members of the school board. Well, it's that time of year again where the last school board meeting of the calendar year, we get to talk about the CIP, Membership Analysis and Trends, budget and the calendar. I'm sure it's just an exciting time of the year for you as it is for me. The first thing that I wanted to really talk about is really the one-page business case that we have before I go into the capital improvement plan, to talk about the membership, the analysis, and the trends. And there are really a few things that we talk about when we speak of membership analysis and trends. We talk about things such as in-migration, out-migration. We talk about birth-to-kay ratios. We talk about our actual enrollment, whether it's gone up and whether it's gone down. And we also talk about transfers within the district. What you'll find in the Attachment A that is a part of your package, it really goes into a lot of this information. And basically, we have grown the FCPS membership increase by 1,006 students, with the largest growth occurring at the middle school level and the high school levels. We did experience a decline at the elementary level, and that is kind of consistent with some trending that we're starting to see, where the birth-to-kindergarten ratio declined from 85% to 83%. That's the number of students that are born, for those that aren't familiar with it, I know all of you are, and then five years later when they arrive as kindergarteners in FCPS. In terms of net in-migration, we experienced a net in-migration of 1,379 students. That's modestly lower than the last year of 1,425, but it looks to be trending as to where we're kind of going to be in the range for the next couple of years. That's what our analysis kind of indicates. Pyramids with the highest in-migration were McLean Pyramid with 232, West Springfield with 170, the Marshall Pyramid with 157, and the pyramids with the most out-migration were South Lakes Pyramid of 110 students, Mount Vernon Pyramid of 94, and West Potomac of 73. We did have this year approximately 21,000 students that transferred within the school division, and that's just under a few thousand students under Arlington County Public Schools' entire school division. So it's pretty significant. The attachment that we've provided, Attachment A, does go into much greater detail, a deeper dive of all the information that is in this just one-page summary, and we'll be happy to discuss it. We do have a work session scheduled for January 22, where upon your review of this information, we can take a much deeper dive because we have the appropriate time allotted to go through it. But I'm ready to answer any questions you might have at this time.
If there are no clarifying questions, which I don't see any, then we'll proceed to the presentation on the capital improvement program. And again, there will be an extensive work session devoted just to these matters in January, so if you'd like to continue. Mr. Plattenberg.
Thank you very much, Madam Chair. Well, good evening again. It's always a grand opportunity to present the FY 2019 to 2023 Capital Improvement Program. As part of the strategic planning night, Goal Four: Resource Stewardship, in alignment with providing for and support of the portrait of a graduate, I'll be introducing this CIP. And tonight's presentation is the first of four opportunities that we're going to have to analyze, give feedback. Certainly, there's many more than that in terms of, anyone who has any questions can submit them at any point, which I know you're aware of. And prior to making modifications before this CIP becomes the adopted CIP by yourselves, the school board. This draft continues to incorporate feedback and suggestions from yourselves, the school board, the superintendent, suggestions from the community at large, FPAC advisory committees, and for the whole purpose and intent to provide a more readable and transparent document that is really a more useful guide. You'll note some open pagination and places where photographs that aren't there, it says this place reserved for photograph, and some areas where you might have questions about things. Well, that's because this is a working draft, and you'll notice that because it is proposed and it isn't the, a school board adopted, we leave a lot of that room for opportunities for our media adjustments in the future. All of those will be fleshed out after your edits are incorporated. I'd like to first thank Kevin Snead, the Special Projects Administrator. He's sitting in the back of church. And Ms. Jessica Gillis, she's the director of planning back there. We're really fortunate to have Ms. Gillis as a part of our new planning office. They do an outstanding job, and I think you'll really enjoy the CIP document itself. the, uh, CIP document itself and what the, the members of the team have done. Um, the facilities planning staff is really skeleton staff with Sue McCruden, Myron Mustamandi, Paul Noe, Pranta Ranbys, Brian Schuster, Virginia Steele, Kathy Vasipoly, and the layout and design by the OCCR staff, Maple Chow. I'd really like to thank all of them and the Office of Communications, uh, that Communications Community Relations, the School Board Office, Susan Quinn and Marty Smith, the two Chief Operating Officers, and Lori St. Seer, and of course, Dr. Braybrand for all of the input and feedback in preparing this document. We do believe that it is, uh, an improvement over last years, and we've got nothing but uh, positive feedback in each of the corresponding years since we've been making these enhancements. So enough of my advertisement, and we'll go ahead and move on. Um, student membership for twenty seventeen, twenty eighteen, well, we had an increased membership. It was, as I said, one thousand and six students increase. Uh, births five years ago increased as compared to the prior year, but they were, the prior year, they were fifteen thousand four hundred and sixty-five, and this past year was fifteen thousand five forty-nine. So there were actually eighty-four more actual births. Birth to kindergarten, the five-years-later ratio decreased by two percent. I mentioned that previously, from the eighty-five percent, um, to the eighty-three percent. The positive net migration experienced in all grades except fifth and twelfth, which fifth, we had a hundred and seven student decline, which is really atypical. It is not typical to have that kind of a decline. And in the twelfth grade, we had an eight hundred and fourteen student decrease, which really is, uh, pretty, pretty typical. The largest grade-level cohorts were in fourth, ninth, and eleventh. Those were fourteen thousand six hundred and thirty-nine, fourteen thousand five hundred and seventy-six, fourteen thousand nine hundred and fourteen respectively, and those were our highest cohorts. For context, uh, smallest cohort would be anywhere around twelve to thirteen thousand. The student membership projections for the five-year projection had showed a moderate growth rate. Uh, we're showing a little bit of leveling off. We've been talking about our contraction lately, and we've been seeing that not only last year. This year, we're still contracting. We're growing, but at a contracted rate. Our elementary membership, uh, projected to decline, and it is showing a little bit more of that as, as I noted at the elementary level. Our future growth is expected at the middle and high school levels, as larger cohorts move up through the system. Uh, the membership growth is expected to occur in areas where surplus capacity may not be available, which I know you're well familiar with that. And capacity pressure is expected more at the middle and high schools. A lot of that has to do with bubbles that kind of come seasonally, if you will, and I'll call them the, the boundary season and the membership and enrollment seasons. Uh, they tend to be protected over a period of time. Sometimes it ebbs and tides over time. Uh, for those of you who've been on the board for a long period of time, you've seen those leveling off, but then all of a sudden, we have a lot of growth. A lot of things have to do with changes in administration in the Washington Metropolitan Area, uh, economic conditions and so forth. The funding that we have, the funding sources, bond funding, of course, we have currently a hundred and fifty-five million a year. We're anticipating that's going to get a bump. You'll see that we have some wishful thinking in one of the charts in there. We show a ten-year forecast in your CIP document, but it really goes out into twenty twenty-three. It should be, uh, twenty eighteen to twenty twenty-eight, but it says twenty eighteen to twenty twenty-three. We put optimistically that we're going to get a bump in funding from, from the county, but we really need to annotate that because we have no indication. We just have heard rumors that that might occur, and of course, we're all excited about the opportunity and prospect. The operating funds that we get, minor capacity enhancements, two-point-four million, routine and major maintenance of ten million, and the Board of Supervisors with the Joint School Board and Board Committee came up with the additional thirteen-point-one million for infrastructure management. The capital project summary, we've got the new Northwest County Elementary School that's funded. For unfunded projects, we've got, uh, well, we also have funded the Fairfax-Oaken Elementary School planning. Uh, we don't have the construction funded for that. The Silverline Elementary School is unfunded. The Future Western High School is unfunded, and five new or repurposed schools are currently unfunded. We do have modular addition and relocations, two of them that are funded, and unfunded modular relocation, uh, West Potomac High School addition, the planning is funded but the construction is not, Justice High School addition, planning funded but the construction is not, Madison High School addition, planning funded but the construction is not. The total five-year requirement that we have, you'll see that it's, uh, eight hundred and thirteen million, six hundred and three thousand, sixty-four dollars, of which, uh, larger than half of that is funded. The unfunded portion, if you think about every two years, we go out to the voters for a bond referendum. That number is somewhat consistent with what we recently went out with, um, given any adjustment for inflation. The total ten-year requirement is a large number that you'll see up there. It's over two billion dollars, of which we have five hundred million almost that are funded, and of course, uh, one-point-seven that are not. Well, you'll see that's significant in the capital project summary. We have really, uh, since the two thousand nineteen twenty-three introduces multiple new projects to the construction cash flow, the largest of which is the renovation of Centerville High School. In addition, the following five elementary school renovations are included: Mosby Woods, Bonnie Bray, Brenmore Park, Brookfield, and Lee's Corner. We're also including the new Silverline Elementary School to accommodate a new development which is anticipated to occur in the Dulles Corridor in the near, near future. Uh, from a funding perspective, over the five-year requirement, um, of the eight hundred million which is, uh, is the need and three hundred and forty million of unfunded, our total ten-year requirement is that two-point-one billion, which is pretty significant, uh, but is consistent with what we've been showing years past in CIP presentations. You'll see some of the renovations that we've completed. Terracotta Elementary School, you heard Dr. Braybrand mention the award and the recognition at the last school board meeting that Terracotta received. Uh, North Springfield Elementary School has been completed. Additionally, we have Bucknell Elementary School and Thomas Jefferson High School that were completed. Improvements that we've made, as I said, to this document, uh, continue to show more than one solution are provided where applicable. Solutions are organized by region and by pyramid. The data is more closely aligned to the maps that you'll see, and in, in that alignment, it also is, um, in keeping with the goals that are at the beginning of the document. Uh, we had previously expressed only one possible solution, which gave the impression to the community that we had already determined the course of action, which in fact, as you know, wasn't the case. So constantly, we were having to respond to that, saying, you know, we hadn't had our public process. We've, in this effort, tried to make it more clear so it doesn't leave that, uh, suggestive indication. Color-coded by regions, we have enhanced visual format, the, by regions, by sections, to provide a more readable format. I know you can't read the tables there, but when you look in the actual CIP documents, for those of you at home that are looking on the website, when you look at it, it's much more intuitive, and I think it's much more user-friendly. Some of the new resources that we have, we have new access to data attributes, and our, uh, really, our collaboration has, uh, greater than ever before. Uh, we assist with higher level of accuracy and program monitoring and all of the like, not only within our departments within Fairfax County Public Schools, but also with our friends over the county. And we've incorporated recommendations from, of course, school board and the Facilities Planning Advisory Committee. Well, that pretty much sums up my brief, uh, presentation regarding the CIP. As I said, we've got four other meetings, well, three other meetings other than tonight, where we'll have plenty of opportunity to discuss this in much more greater detail. And as has been in the past, I'm sure there'll be a, a lot of spirited discussion, um, because of what is going on, because Fairfax County is still a great place to live, work, and thrive. So with that, Madam Chair, I'm welcome to answer any questions you might have.
Thank you. Mr. Plattenberg, yes, I have three, four. I have Ms. Schultz, Ms. Corbett Sanders, Mr. Moon, and Ms. Palchak. And Ms. Schultz, you're first.
That's a shock. Hi, Mr. Plattenberg. How are you?
Good evening. Living the dream.
Hi, guys, in the back. I hope this isn't church for you. So first of all, I'm thrilled to see some of the enhancements, um, in the CIP, um, and having, uh, sort of potentially restarted, uh, the CPDC Committee of the Board, and we'll talk about that later in the board updates. Um, anything we can do to enhance the transparency of what we're doing in terms of our capital projections and our capital needs, uh, I think helps not only our work with the Board of Supervisors as we seek to address, um, what I've said keeps me up at night. Um, and it is the capital infrastructure needs and the population, the population changes. Um, and I say that after, uh, having just spent the afternoon over in Tyson's, and as I drove by each new, um, residential building, I thought, where are we going to educate all of these children? Um, and that's not even my district. So, um, a couple of questions on this draft proposal. Um, in, in perusing it, I don't see, um, something that I've sought for some time, which is a projection, um, analysis of what we said was going to happen versus what actually happened.
Oh, yes, ma'am.
Is, is this something that you're, you and your staff have contemplated? Because to me, this is pretty fundamental. This is, you know, um, in, in an education world of, you know, asking kids to show their work, I think us showing our work on what we said we thought would happen versus what actually happens is a part of the transparency process. That's the first question I have. Do you want to take that one?
I do. That's an excellent question, Ms. Schultz. I mean, we, that's one of the reasons why, since we've been implementing this new demographic system and what I call the dream team that Ms. Gillis supervises, it really is a group that is, uh, focused on providing data, not only data that you can see into the future, but also look back at your accuracy to make sure that everything that we have done, the, the assumptions that were made are fully analyzed and scrutinized. Um, we are just getting that because we are now geocoding every student, and you'll see in the narrative that's provided in this document, it talks a little bit about more the greater, uh, integrity that we feel in the data that's represented. Um, we do not have that full capacity yet, but it is a commitment that we've made, not only to you but the school board, that we are going to be able to provide what we projected and what in fact actually occurred, so that the questions can go back to see over time what happened. Uh, in many instances, I'm sorry, I just want to mention, in many instances in the past, programs had changed from one location to another. Well, if that's not identified, for example, let's say an AAP center is, uh, at Lanier, for example, and in one year that happens, well, if that's not, if there's no demarcation, then somebody coming back years later to look at what the effect was and how come the enrollment changed so much in this one school or two schools into this school.
I can certainly appreciate that, um, but I, I think that that's what the world of footnotes are for. Um, and, and what I don't want to do is say, well, we've, we've planted, um, a demarcation line that now we're geocoding students so that in the future, we'll be able to tell you how accurate our past projections are, and we're now in the past. Um, I, I, I would posit that even if you began that process of, um, tables that show what projections were, and on a rolling forward basis, how those turned out, you can always, um, denote or annotate that these were prior to, um, our, uh, student planning areas, uh, or our geocoding. And, and I do, uh, I'm, I'm gonna look for an iteration of that in, in a successive draft. The next question I have is particularly related to, you had some priority, um, boundary changes that are suggested in here, and I, I guess my question is, is why in particular, and they're located on page forty-six of the draft document.
Yeah, it used to be page forty-one, but now it's changed.
In particular, uh, Oakden, Madison Marshall, and West Potomac. I'm gonna tell you, I'm a little bit shocked that, um, Centerville, um, isn't located on there. Um, as I have, I think for, I don't know, four successive meetings, um, including the Board of Supervisors, I've brought up the fact that in four years, I'm short a thousand seats just between Chantilly High School and Centerville High School. And, um, with, and my colleagues are here from Fairfax City with the ongoing, um, development, beautiful development, that they're doing in Fairfax City, that's also putting new pressure on Fairfax High School. And I'm the single, uh, largest provider of students to Lanier and Fairfax outside of Fairfax City. And so then that creates a sort of a, almost a domino effect pressure of if I don't have any room at Chantilly and I don't have any room at Centerville, and the new West, I don't know what it's going to be called, eventual, you know, high school is well beyond the reach of the epicenter of the problem, and I also have Lake Braddock in a, a decline. You know, there's literally nothing here, um, and this, Dr. Brayround, you know, as I keep bringing up, equity of a different sort. There's nothing here that provides any relief. Uh, and so, you know, what, what happens to, you know, a, um, a Lake Braddock, Robinson, Fairfax High School, Centerville High School, Chantilly High School, end of the county, um, that isn't listed here for any priority relief?
Well, if you, in the document, there are conversation, two things. The first thing is, that's an excellent point to bring up in the work session that we can now be responding to as a part of the discussion. But if you look on page one fourteen, it goes ahead and lists by individual pyramids in the elementary, middle, and high school level, um, to support, some of which are saying, but also, when staff made the recommendations for the ones that we're talking about, it's because we have the biggest capacity crunches there. It doesn't mean that we don't have them at Centerville. In fact, if you heard my presentation, I mentioned a Centerville High School addition. So you're right, it's a matter of when and which ones are the most urgent. That's perfect part of what we have the, uh, the follow-up work session for, that we can discuss and articulate and show the data as it relates to, uh, each of the points that you brought up.
Well, I am bringing it up now because, um, well, I'm not bringing it up now for the first time. I'm gonna keep reiterating it, and I expect it to be a significant part of the work session. Um, and as it was, um, with Dr. Braybrand and some of the, um, LT staff on the initial budget review on a holdover of some of the, the capital monies, is that there, there are some really significant pressures, and it's not only pressures just due to student population, but also itinerant space within the buildings, um, et cetera. And it just, there's no place for the students to go. And, and that causes problems with, um, special education students and the provision of, and the placement of, um, services in schools. If every, every square inch of the school is filled to the max, then, um, then we wind up as, uh, Dr. Johnson has helped me, um, solve, you know, an hour and forty-five minutes each way, you know, ten-year-old autism students. I mean, the, these are very significant real issues in my end of the county, and I, and I can't, I can't continue to be working with the CIP that doesn't highlight how we're going to solve some of these problems. I do look forward to, um, also building into the CIP as we continue to improve and modify the CIP, that as we place, um, modular, uh, structures in, that we also articulate in the CIP what the exit strategy is. So not only do we have to, you know, temporary building should be a temporary solution, um, and we should have and, and mentally prepare, um, an exit strategy anytime that we have to put one in. Um, and so I'm gonna keep looking forward to that. I know there's others that want to talk. I know we have more work to do, but there are some very significant things that have been done here that are terrific, but there are also, um, some, uh, gaps that I'm gonna be looking to fill before we get to a final CIP to address, uh, issues at my end of the county. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next, Ms. Corbett Sanders, and Mr. Moon, and Ms. Palchak.
I echo, um, the comments of Ms. Schultz and others. Uh, thank you so much about, this is a much better CIP as far as providing options and being forward-looking. Uh, I, I think you guys have just made huge, um, stead on that, or huge improvements in that area. One question I do have is that, um, you know, your projections, are you still using the projection model that you don't count, uh, capacity demand until shovel has turned?
You mean in terms of new construction that's being?
Yeah.
Yes.
Okay, good. That is probably why, if you look at, um, what's missing from here is Embark Richmond Highway. Embark Richmond Highway has a plan of over twenty-two hundred students coming in the next ten years, and we do know that a number of those, um, construction products, projects have been approved by the Planning Commission and will be having shovels turned soon.
That's an excellent point because there are a number, and that's why I mentioned, there are a number of things going on across Fairfax County. Uh, you heard Ms. Schultz talk about the issues in her magisterial district, yours as well. Um, when you talk about M-Park, Embark, when that's gonna come, I know there's a lot of negotiations, and that's why some of those things are pushed out a little bit, because we anticipate a big rush that's gonna be coming, uh, further down the line. We, and as that continues to flash, that's what I love about the CIP being, uh, one year, each year we come back and look at a five-year projection. But yeah, that's exactly right.
Well, I, I will be. Well, I will be asking for reference to that being introduced into the CIP because obviously there is some demand coming. And the other thing that I would urge is that we have artificial boundaries being each of our regions in the CIP. And those artificial boundaries seem to suggest that we only look within that boundary. And I know of a number of communities that are in the Mount Vernon region that span two of our, two of our FCPS regions.
Magisterial.
And so as a result, it's, the community doesn't understand that if there's capacity in another building, but it's within Region Four versus Region Three.
Right.
And so I think we need to think a little bit more in depth about addressing capacity on a broader scale. We talked about this last year in, when we talk about boundaries, that we don't look at just the boundaries associated with the neighboring school. And then the other piece of it, and I'm going to be encouraging Dr. Braybrand to build this into his equity piece going forward, is that we need to be very intentional in how we do our development and how we spread, you know, as we look at possible changes in boundaries, enhancements to buildings, and where we place specific programs. We need to be very intentional that it does not negatively impact our equity intentions. And so I will ask you to be very specific about that in the future. And then the last thing is that, and this is something that Mrs. Evans and I talked with the Planning Commission, and Mrs. Keys-Gamar at the time was on the Planning Commission Schools Committee. We talked extensively about, actually, two things that I would urge you to remember. One is that we need to look at the cumulative impact of our building so that when we see multiple projects happening, what our proffers currently work, how they work is that they look at one-offs. So we need to almost be, keeping a running tally on the impact of having multiple projects happening over a period of time, and I hope you're doing that. And then the last piece that we also spoke, and you were there, is regarding not only trailers, but that when we look at capacity of our buildings, some of, we currently count capacity of our modulators as being fixed capacity. And one of the things I would urge you to look at is that a modular is not a modular is not a modular. And at least within my district, you have some modulators that are actually close to brick and mortar and, from an equity standpoint, on par with a classroom in a building. And then you have modulators which are just glorified trailers. And so I would urge that those should not be counted towards our capacity and that they should be actually looked at as, we should be phasing them out over time.
That's good feedback. And I know the work that the, that we've done with the Planning Commission on the Schools Committee has opened up a lot of those conversations. But yeah, we do need to reflect that. I think that's good feedback.
Mr. Moon?
I'm going to eventually get to my favorite topic again. I know you've heard me say this probably more than enough, but this is for the public who are watching us, that it's quite interesting you, how you say, how you describe the modulators as a glorified trailers. I should start using that description from now and now on. Looking at your five-year required, no, 10-year requirement and comparing that to your current cash flow you get from the county, there seems to be a difference of about $50 million per year, correct?
Yes, sir.
So over 10-year period will be $500 million short. What is, what is recommended renovation cycle? Is that 25 years?
School Board policy says 20 to 25 years. Yes, sir.
And what is our current situation as far as renovation cycle is concerned?
Around 37 and it's going to be moving out towards 50 with.
So if you do not get additional, additional to 15 million, $15 million per year, could I, is it fair to assume that the renovation cycle of 37, 36, 37 years will be even longer, become longer?
Yes, sir.
Could they even exceed 40 years easily?
Yes, sir.
That, and also I understand that we did discuss about trailers at the work session, you know, several weeks ago, and I did, several of us have brought that to the attention of county, the members in the County Board of Supervisors. And we do expect to have that discussion again in the spring time, spring of 2018, to see how we as a county can address trailer issues because we are educating more than 19,000 students in more than 800 trailers. I understand that through regular CIP, CIP will be eliminating some of those trailers. My recollection, looking at the last year's, you know, CIP, I did take a quick look, you know, going back to last year, is that within the next five-year period, you are projecting to be able to eliminate maybe 270 trailers.
That's correct.
You probably eliminate 25 this year or last year since the last CIP publication. But, so with a 10-year projection, let's say that we get the full funding of $2 billion 180 million for the next 10 years, that obviously requires another $50 million per year. How many trailers you think we'll be able to eliminate? Could I just multiply that 270 for the next five years by two? Is that a fair assumption?
I'd say a third of that, but yes. Instead of doubling it, I'd do a third.
So probably 540 out of 890 we had from last year.
Given that there's no other changes in programs or.
Assuming that there are no change.
Early childhood or.
Correct. You know, there are other variables.
Yes, sir.
So what I'm trying to point out is this, even with $2 billion 180 million, we can only eliminate 540 trailers out of 890. There still will be 350, probably 350 with 8,000 students in there. That's beyond our 10-year CIP program. So when we present our requirement, I think we need to consider those trailers we will not be able to touch in the next 10-year period. We need to, we need to show that our true need is not just this 2.18, but there are trailers not in optimal condition we are educating our students. Because I always consider a day lost in the life of a child is a day lost forever. And we are educating these kids year after year in those more than 800 trailers. And we need to present that as our requirement. So what I'm saying is, just in case, because I missed, you know, work session earlier this week, I may possibly miss the next work session. If, if I'm not there and that somebody bring up this to be discussed, rather than, rather than stating that it's $2.18 billion, our needs are greater than that because we have those trailers sitting there we should not be having. So gap is not $50 million per year cash flow-wise, it is greater than that. I hope that we can get that number. I hope that we can send that number over to County Board of Supervisors. I hope that we can show that number to the public for them to think about and comment on. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Moon. Next I have Ms. Palczak and then Ms. Keys-Gamar.
Thank you. I will echo some of the comments made and I look forward to deeper dive at our work session. First one, because we did a broad overview, I was just wondering if you could share with us, Tyson's is in my district, how many of those five unfunded schools are in the Tyson's area?
I don't believe any of the unfunded schools, well, there is one that's in the Tyson's area that is not funded, the site's been identified.
Sorry, and I mean, so then Goodston, Loring, Piment Hills, kind of.
Oh, yes.
All of those, right?
Yes.
Tyson's region, I guess.
I'm sorry, the repurposing ones, yes.
Wider, Maryfield. So I believe at least three out of those five.
Yeah, there are quite a few. There are quite a few because the growth in that region, the intent we haven't hidden about it is to repurpose some of our existing facilities.
Okay.
But those may be, again, with that 314 million that's outstanding, 340 million maybe in partially starting to identify as planning in the next CIP, in the next, in the next bond program.
But currently, and I know we're seeing.
Currently unfunded, yes.
And we're seeing quite a bit of growth.
That's correct.
Maybe not children yet in some of the new high rises, but we're getting there in the growth. So I believe it was at least three out of those five. So that's what we're looking at is there's a lot of growth in this area.
There is.
And currently, not enough funding to have the schools. I get quite a few questions.
Correct.
From constituents, and so just wanted to be able to answer that. So that is, in addition to trailers, modulators, and other regions that are seeing growth, it's pretty clear that the funding currently provided is not adequate. Okay. And we'll probably see increased modulators or trailers. Secondly, just to clarify on there, when we have the projected growth enrollment for Jackson Middle School, it does not include the boundary change we're looking at, is that correct? Because it still looks pretty high, so I just want to make sure.
Not currently, no. The out-years show a decrease, but.
Sorry, I can't.
No, not currently, but the out-years will be a significant decrease here.
Okay. So the reason it's so high right now is because that's not.
Because the boundary hasn't been changed.
Okay, thank you.
I mean, we're in the middle of that process right now. We've had all the community meetings.
But I just wanted to clarify for us in community and for Principal Lehman that, no, indeed, we will see that lowered hopefully next year. And then finally, for the Schools Committee, and I'm now serving with Ms. Evans, some of what was said, we did kind of start the conversation, I appreciate, I know your staff is at so many evening meetings here tonight, and joins us for the School Committee. I think we're starting to talk about doing something similar to what the joint budget meetings have done, is to really start with where our staff are already working together and to start with, you know, their annual work calendar so that we can start to, you know, really have a better sense of what's coming down the road, ensuring that FCPS staff is there and aware as well as county staff. So I hope that my colleagues will continue to push for that and ensure that there's more coordination, even if we're not at the policy level yet, definitely at the staff level, because I think that will help and hopefully help your staff in some of those planning projections. And then finally, and I forgot to thank you and your staff, sorry, it's been a long day, but really appreciate it. This is a beautiful CIP and I look forward to having a chance to sit down and go through the new write-up. I'm having a hard time with page 83, so I don't know if that's just in my version or if that's, okay, I'm getting a head nod from Jessica, so I think that's something you're looking at. It's a little bit blurry, has Marshall High School, so.
Oh, it's blurry, yeah.
Hoping that can, before I get my printed copy, that we can see a better version of that. But thank you so much. I, you know, at a very quick glance, this looks like it will be much easier and have the information we need. And I also appreciate that it often offers the various options because I think it's true that until we go through the process and the votes, and we have some coming up, that that is not finalized. Included on there, one of those boundary adjustment priorities, it's still in the process of discussion and we'll have more meetings in January, February, so just want that to be clear, that nothing's a done deal until it's been finally voted on by the board.
Absolutely.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
I have Ms. Keys-Gamar and then Ms. McLaughlin. Ms. Keys-Gamar?
Well, first of all, thank you, and I'm looking forward to going through the work session. I'm just going to bring up a couple of things to see if, I don't know if this can be available by the work session, but I'll just throw it your way because I know how resourceful you can be. I mean that in just, but also for real. With respect to trailers, I know Mr. Moon expressed a lot of concern there, and I'm wondering if those trailers are concentrated at particular schools or in particular pyramids? If, you know, if we could almost get like a little bit of, you know, like where trailers are more necessary? Are there some schools where they're not necessary or is this all across Fairfax County where it's a problem?
Yeah, one of the things in the resource documents, we did include, when you look at the individual schools, we do include which pyramids have so many trailers and so many modulators.
Okay.
So the data, the data are reflected in the document for that. But to answer your question, it, you know, it kind of depends. There are pockets where there are more. A lot of that has to do with capacity, really issues that we've had. And then when you look at different programs that have been extremely successful, one of the unintended consequences that, when they first started years and years and years ago, they've become extremely successful and therefore it's pushed out some of the overcrowding. But yeah, we do have that included and I'll be happy to go ahead and send you a follow-up. And then if it's not what you're looking for in reference pages, then you can go ahead and give me the feedback.
Okay, thank you. And then I know one of the things that we did discuss in working with the Schools Committee was that I had some big concerns about developments and the projections of students. And the feedback that I received from School Board members was that the, the accuracy did not seem to reflect, the accuracy of those projections weren't necessarily there. And so I don't know how much progress we've been able to make or is that something we're still working on? Because I know in some instances, you know, the developer would, might say, come and say, we're not expecting any students, but then that wouldn't necessarily, you know, be the case and then that's something that we have to absorb. So I don't know if there's been any progress, but certainly if we can address that because I know that we are absorbing those costs.
You're correct. We, we've made great progress with the projection accuracy in terms of student yields. The trouble has been is that we've used a county-wide average when we went ahead and applied for what the net impact of the proffer equivalent would have been, if applicable, and then with the law changing and everything. And therefore, there was a loss, to your point. You're absolutely spot on. We do need to continue that work. We're not finished in making progress on making sure that the cost burden that you referenced is addressed. We are having those conversations, so as part of that committee, where it'll go, I'm not too sure yet, but.
Well, there's two parts to that, and thank you for that explanation. But also I know that with respect to developments.
Correct.
They come forward and give projections. And have we developed a way to say that's not necessarily an accurate projection because I'm not sure that the projections we're getting from the developers are actually accurate and therefore we end up having more students and therefore we end up having overcrowding or we have to absorb the cost of those students.
We still have opportunities, but we've made great progress. In fact, one of the things that I'm so proud of Ms. Gillis for is that she's gone and met with the county, our county counterparts and have the conversation about how that archaic or legacy formula had been done and what the burden it had been doing to the schools in terms of impact and cost. And I think, I think people are starting to really see the impact. I think she's done great work in that area. I don't think we're there yet 100%, but at least the conversation's being held about the true impact of those developments you talk about. We're also being brought into the conversation earlier, it is not a systemic, basically codified process yet, to your point, that I think you want us to get to, but we're working at it. We're at least being more involved than we ever had been. And, and they're starting to recognize that the cost isn't what the average is in that archaic formula that we were grateful to get when we got it back in the day, but it really isn't recognizing. There's one Board of Supervisor member that we've been working with in one magisterial district who's brought us in with the development that's going on along the Dulles Technology Quarter. And he's fought real, real hard because, again, the county staff, our school staff have articulated quite clearly the true financial burden, exactly what you're talking about. So I'm excited about the opportunities. I know they're, they're too little, too late for a lot of people's beliefs, but we're making progress, to answer your question. Oh, and it was in capacity, not resources, that list the modulators and the actual trailers. I mentioned resources, I meant capacity.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, Ms. McLaughlin.
I know we'll be able to have a much more extensive conversation, but I wanted to just make sure and kind of share with you, but also with my colleagues as well, that I really appreciate that the Planning Commission through its Schools Committee is wanting to enable the School Board and. to enable the school board and essentially the work on the county side to have more of that shared dialogue. And I think many of us have said over time that while we have great respect for the Board of Supervisors and the complexity of the work they do on the county side, especially as one Fairfax, actions that get taken with respect to land use have a tremendous effect on schools. And I'm excited that our colleague Karen Keys-Gamara, having served on the other commission, I think you'll actually be able to help us in a unique way, as we can learn more about how we can partner up with the Planning Commission. My colleague for Braddock District is Nell Hurley, who has served for six years on the Planning Commission, and she tries to keep me apprised of things along the way, and so I would just say that I've appreciated, and I hope all of my Magisterial District colleagues, that you get a chance to work with your Planning Commissioners, if nothing more, for our ability to kind of help promote the message again, that what happens on the Planning Commission side, where it impacts schools, that shared dialogue is going to be so important. I know you're well aware, Mr. Plattenberg, that through two boundary adjustments, Woodson High School continues to see increasing enrollment, and that this is the year that I look forward to working with you and Mr. Sneed, because I don't think we can really put it off much longer to looking at things. And as you know, we prefer to have students in buildings instead of in modulators and trailers, and Woodson, you know, has some area that we're using, not for instruction, that I think we need to be looking at some solutions for that. I also will remind my colleagues, in case this is in your district, but in mine, we've got some really strange sort of leftover broken feeders, where students go to, like there's little islands where they go to one elementary school, and then they go to a different middle school, high school, and in my case, literally over Braddock Road, you could just flip the two, and then they would be single feeding, feeding all the way up. So I wish we could clone you, Mr. Plattenberg, because then we might be able to accomplish a whole lot more each given year, but I want to echo what my colleagues have said. Every year since I've been on the board, and especially in your arrival, the CIP document, which I look forward to my copy coming, is really just, continues to be such a wealth of information, very readable and very helpful, not just to the board, but to the public. And so I want to thank you and your team for making that an important investment in your time, because I think it helps us better serve our community.
Thank you.
Ms. Hines?
Thank you. Mr. Plattenberg, you brought up the situation out in the Dulles Corridor area, where recently the Drainsville District Supervisor, County Supervisor, went out, teamed with the school board, the school system, and the county folks, and actually challenged a large developer out there, as I understand it, and actually, I think, managed to have sort of a courageous conversation with that developer and make some differences, or, I mean, so the reason I'm asking is because I think that for us on the school board, we feel like we're out of that conversation. And I try to keep my supervisor informed about, you know, our CIP, our needs for the schools, you know, in the Reston area, there's a tremendous amount of development coming, great density, people in the community are worried, and they look, they look to me for answers about, well, where are all these kids going to go to school? So I have to look to my supervisor for, really, for the answer to that question. So do you have any, I mean, I guess I'm thinking about how we, we get the, how we get the community informed enough to know that this is an issue and a problem, and then put pressure on our supervisor to, to do that sort of thing? Am I talking around it? I mean.
No, I, you know, I'm sorry I had to be up at 2:45 to look at the weather this morning, so I'm running a little dry and creative ideas.
Oh.
But I really think that it is about relationships, to your point, and I think it's really about working together. I've seen it amongst the joint committees between school board and Board of Supervisors, and I think not only can ideas like that, through the joint work, maybe the Budget Committee, maybe an outcropping of that, maybe a subcommittee, but not only can address that, but I think also Mr. Moon's charge and many other board members of the students being taught in trailers. I think those issues, when we've come together and developed an understanding and developed relationships, I think we've made great progress in the past, and that's, that's the first blush that comes to mind for me.
Okay, thank you. I'm guessing that something pushed that particular supervisor to a point where he really wanted to insert himself and be insistent, and you're not here to speak for him, I know that.
I can.
So I'll have to do that research and figure it out.
Thank you.
But I, I think any effort we can make to communicate to the community, you know, what our, what we're, what we're dealing with, what we're grappling with, you know, how far behind we are, not only in space, but in renovation, is helpful, so.
Thank you.
Okay, seeing no further asked to speak, I will thank Mr. Plattenberg very much for your presentation, and yes, I will thank again Supervisor Faust, who has been very successful in advocating on our behalf. Thank you very much, it was a wonderful presentation, and your staff, and as you have heard, I think folks appreciate the additional information that we get each year, and the huge effort to be as precise as possible, so that our projections help to guide us with very wise decisions. So thank you very, very much. No snow tomorrow, right?
Maybe in the afternoon.
We hope not.
Well, thank you for the opportunity.
And we look forward to, to a work session in, in January, but again, thank you very much.
Thank you.
The next item is confirmation of action taken in closed meeting. This is the portion of the meeting where the board will confirm any action regarding issues that were discussed in the closed meeting. These issues may include action taken regarding student disciplinary matters. Board members have discussed each individual case, and at this time, I will make a motion to confirm the recommended action, and I will call on Ms. Corbett Sanders.
I move to deny the school reassignment appeal of a student who possessed illegal drugs at school with the intent to distribute them and to confirm the disciplinary decision of the Division Superintendent.
Second? Seconded by Ms. Schultz. All those in favor? It is McElveen, Corbett Sanders, Strauss, Moon, Hines, Schultz, Darnak Hofex, Keys-Gamara, those opposed? Abstentions, Evans, Wilson, McLaughlin, Paulcheck, the motion carries. Thank you. Next is the standard school year calendar, and I will call on Ms. Paulcheck for the first motion.
One second. I, sorry, here we go. I move that the board adopt the 2018-19 standard school year calendar.
Second?
Seconded by Mr. McElveen, and there will be one amendment that I know of, so Ms. Paulcheck, would you like to speak to your motion?
Yes, I will speak briefly, I will also be supporting the amendment, but I do, first of all, want to thank staff, Dr. Ramey, Dr. Braybrand, for helping us take our first step, maybe a baby step, or toddler step, into shifting our process to include a calendar committee, to include input from the community, from various stakeholders, and to have a more in-depth conversation as to balancing what we are representing in our calendar. I know we all look forward to continuing the conversation and seeing how we can make improvements for the next round, but I am just very grateful that you took the time to meet with our community. Some of the key points I will read are that the 18-19 standard school year calendar was developed with a focus on instruction and learning for students, as well as improved professional development opportunities for staff. While teaching and learning was a priority, a multitude of factors were considered and balanced during development of the calendar. A calendar committee was formed this year to assist in this development. The committee was composed of representatives from a variety of internal and external constituent groups. It included representatives of voice, FCCPTA, FCPS Teacher and Staff Associations, Testing Services, Curriculum and Instruction, Professional Development, and Student Activities. So I do hope that, I know we'll have a lively discussion, but do hope that we can come together and support a calendar that will hopefully better serve our community.
Mr. McElveen, would you like to speak to your second?
I will reserve my comments, until later.
Okay, thank you. I will recognize Mr. Moon for an amendment.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I move to amend the main motion to restore the dates presented in the calendar D for August 2018, and June 2019, to include the start day for new teachers to be August 13, 2018, the returning teachers to commence their contract on August 17, 2018, as a teacher workday, with a flexibility to work remotely on that date. The first day of a school for students to be on August 28, 2018, and the last day of a school to be June 13, 2019, for students, for students, and June 14, 2019, for teachers.
Second?
Seconded by Mr. McElveen. Mr. Moon, would you like to speak to your amendment?
Thank you, Madam Chair. First of all, I apologize to my colleagues for the lateness of this, you know, notice of this amendment. I didn't actually get to see the, a option E until yesterday, and I had to give some thought about whether I could support option E as is, and came to a conclusion that I should propose this amendment, even though it was coming at a very late stage, that as I stated earlier in the evening, I missed the work session on Monday, part of the work session on Monday, so I didn't get to participate when the calendar was discussed on Monday. So I missed that whole discussion, I apologize again. So I, so I don't know exactly how this calendar E came about, but when I saw this, I was quite surprised about the first day of the school for students now being on Wednesday, August 29. And that is a change from Tuesday, there was an option D. Even with the option D, I wasn't too happy, that we were starting on Tuesday. As we all know, this year, we started on Monday. For many years, school board, Fairfax County School Board, has advocated for ability to start prior to Labor Day, because we believed as a collective body to be able to put in more instructional time before all those important tests in May, as opposed to putting those days after those testing windows. So what I saw, I mean, as I said earlier, even, even with the option D, I wasn't too happy, but I was willing to go along. But when I saw option E, it was taking even step farther back, then I fully understand about the concerns of the teachers, that option D was requiring teachers to begin their workday on Friday. That is why my motion was crafted in such a way that we give a teacher's flexibility to be able to work on that day at a remote place. So this were, my amendment would accomplish for the month of August 2018, two things. Provide the students another instructional day prior to May testing timeframe. Also give a teacher, address the concerns on the part of a teacher, so that they can work remotely on that Friday. And also looking at the June, month of June for 2019, when you compare option D and option E, option E and option E, the last day of a teacher work, last teacher workday is on a Monday, on a Monday. But my amendment, because my amendment goes back to option D for the month, that is going to be on a Friday, as opposed to a Monday. I think teachers should probably prefer Fridays opposed to Monday. It's just two simple changes that outright ask my colleagues to put on my amendment.
And just to clarify, in your amendment, then you are also proposing that the student, that the end of the school year for students is earlier.
One day earlier, correct.
As according to.
Because we start one day earlier, we end one day earlier.
Okay, thank you, all right. Mr. McElveen, would you like to speak to your amendment?
So I would like to thank Mr. Moon for, although he missed our discussion on Monday, for taking that step back and looking at what was brought forward to the board just yesterday. And, you know, I think every year we come into this project with a goal of compressing as much learning time prior to our exams, while also starting as late as possible, ending as early as possible, and maintaining adequate winter and spring vacations. And so, at the same time, we also want to prevent as much whiplash in the community as possible, because we don't want to vary so much year to year that it affects people's lives and how they plan their vacations and things like that. I think Mr. Moon's suggestions on, on these dates are, are good suggestions, and I hope the board supports them.
Okay, I have Ms. Hines, Ms. Evans, Ms. Keys-Gamara, and Ms. Corbett Sanders. Ms. Hines?
Thank you. I also missed the work session on Monday, although I did watch the video afterward, so I think I have a sense of the round and round conversation that we had and always have about the calendar. I appreciate Mr. Moon giving us a chance to talk about, this basically, I think boils down to three days, one being the first day for teachers, the next being the last day for teachers, and the other one being the start day for kids, right? So these are the issues. And I can see how, as, if, as a teacher, if I wanted to have one of those days, the first day or the last day of school, as a remote day, you know, work remotely, that first day in August is much more likely practically, I think, to be a day when you could work remotely, than the day, the very, the one day that you have after kids leave to clear out your classroom and close up the school year. I think you have to be on-site to do that sort of thing. And under option E, you know, it looks like the kids, last day for kids is Friday, teachers have the weekend, and then Monday have to come in and clear out the classroom. So I can, you know, I think I understand what you're trying to do, Mr. Moon. I'm not as moved by the start day Tuesday or Wednesday, to me, I don't know that, I'm just not that concerned about that. But I wanted to ask Dr. Braybrand, if you don't mind, you chose these other options for calendar E, and I wanted to get your sense of, you know, do you understand what Mr. Moon is asking, and why did you choose these other, this other way of doing it?
Well, the truth is, this is my first year with the calendar, and I know you all have had much more experience doing it, and each year I promised to be a superintendent that learns and listens, and then hopefully can help lead even better with it. I heard a lot of things at the work session on Monday, and frankly, just as I walked out, I turned to Dr. Ramey and said, "Could you take everything, as much as everything you heard, and try to put it into one more calendar and see if E's better than D?" So we attempted to do that in option E, but we're certainly understanding of the tweak to take the first month and the last month of calendar D and put that back in. So administratively, we'll certainly make either calendar work. Frankly, sometimes it's what your lens is, are you thinking about teacher time and workdays? Are you thinking about student instruction before SOLs and AP and IP tests? And depending on what lens you're looking at, is how the calendar can kind of go. But either, either calendar is, has the support of the school administration, and we will certainly work with the board with what, any other conversations that you have today. We've tried to bring the best of everything we heard forward, and that's why we went ahead and brought you back a calendar E.
All right, thank you. I do appreciate all the effort that I know it takes to reflect all the many opinions, some of them very passionate about the calendar, and so that's helpful. I feel like at some point it becomes a toss salad, you know, and what kind of tomatoes do you throw in at the end, right? So, thank you.
Okay, I just want to read off what I have, make sure I haven't missed anybody. I have Evans, Keys-Gamara, Corbett Sanders, Schultz, McLaughlin, Paulcheck, okay, that's the lineup. Ms. Evans is next.
Thank you, and I, first of all, want to say how much I appreciate the work.
And I, first of all, want to say how much I appreciate the work that Dr. Braybrand and Dr. Ramey did on taking our, our work from the work session and putting it into an improved plan, because I do think it is overall an improved plan. I did have the same reaction Mr. Moon and others of us had when I saw the change in the first day of school going into Wednesday. I just didn't see the need for it, particularly when the new teachers weren't going to come back until a Tuesday. So I think Mr. Moon's amendment is warranted. For one thing, we did fight, you know, we're fighting very hard for this waiver, the pre-Labor Day waiver, and I think we should take maximum advantage of it while we can. It also did concern me that the last teacher day was going to be Monday, you know, a Monday, Monday, June 17. And I agree with Ms. Hines that that's not likely to be a particularly productive workday. If you're going to clean out your, your classroom, then you're not going to be doing it remotely. Whereas, you know, you, the teachers coming in on a Friday, I realize that that's not ideal, but if they can work remotely, there's plenty of planning that, that can be done. So I think that that tradeoff is a good tradeoff. I will speak more to the calendar itself, but overall, I think we're, we're coming around with Mr. Moon's amendment. I think we're getting to the point where we have overall a very excellent calendar. So thank you, Mr. Moon, for bringing this amendment.
And Ms. Kies-Gamara?
I'm trying to distinguish, really, this is a clarifying question for you, Mr. Moon. The only difference I'm really seeing from your proposal from D, am I, am I reading this correctly? The first day of school on D is Tuesday, and you want it to be Tuesday? Okay, so that's the same. All right, and then the ending, you don't like the weekend?
No, actually, actually, main motion is option E.
It's Monday.
Okay. Okay, so you prefer D.
That's Wednesday. I prefer D for month of August and D for month of June.
Okay, and then that, that, the, that Friday, the 17th, you wanted that to be a flexible day? I don't think that's listed as a flexible day on this calendar.
Correct, correct. That's a flexible day. That's why my motion is stated that way, flexibility to be given to be able to work in a remote place.
Right. And so my question, I guess, to Dr. Braybrand would be the distinction between, is there a difference or a burden of having that day, that first day, TW, what, the 17th? Is, is that a diff, having that flexible, does that present problems in terms of what you were trying to accomplish with that day?
I'm, I'm confident that our staff can work to have that the first day that teachers return, if teachers need the flexibility to have an alternative work location, that that can be provided. I absolutely believe that can happen. I think many teachers would love to come in and just sort of get their classrooms ready, get ready for the week ahead, but if those, because of other engagements, need to be able to work remotely, we can make that work. And if a teacher simply, because of, some teachers have jobs or whatever, and they need to end up taking a, their, a day of leave for that Friday, I'm sure our administrators would certainly work with them on that. So they could have the flexibility, frankly, to either take a day of their own personal leave, they have five personal days of leave, or if they need to work remotely and not be at the school, we'll be able to make that work as well.
Thank you. Okay, next, I have Ms. Corbett Sanders.
Thank you. I echo everybody else's thanks. Dr. Braybrand, this has been a wonderful calendar year from the standpoint of pre-planning, the fact that you pulled together at Mrs. Palchek's recommendation, a committee to work on recommendations for calendars, sought community input upfront, and were presented with initially three options, then four, and now five options. I do support Mr. Moon's motion. I think that it is important to try to give flexibility to our working professionals as they transition from summer employment to, or summer holiday plans, or whatever they choose to do over the summer, into the work year. And I, so I think it's a great idea to have the flexibility on that Friday start. I also think that we want to have our children in class as much time as possible before those high stakes testing. I would also like to talk a little bit about the three-hour early releases. I think the three-hour early releases are very important for especially our elementary school teachers. When we got rid of the Monday, early, you know, half-day Mondays, we got rid of the collaborative planning time. And for our elementary school teachers, this became a challenge, it became especially a challenge for our Title I schools, which require a lot more time in planning to address the needs of their students and to work across disciplines to ensure that we are providing, we are meeting our children by name and need. And so I just wanted to offer a thank you to you, Dr. Braybrand, and to you, Dr. Ramey, for thinking about the needs of our teachers to have not only professional development time, but also time for collaboration. And so with, with that, I am happy to support Mr. Moon's recommendations and look forward to other discussion. The one thing I do have a concern about is the different lengths of the quarters with this calendar. We had a balanced calendar when you went with E, but we changed that balance by shifting the calendar a bit early. And so just, I don't know if you can change it this year, or looking towards next year to try to create that balance. I'm looking especially at the January 2019 quarter ending on the 24th and having both a holiday at the beginning of the week and a teacher workday at the end of the week. Would it be possible to move the 24th to the 25th and move that teacher workday up one? And that would add one more day to the second quarter and diminish the third quarter by one, so it would be 44 and 46. And I know that's a little late. I was just looking at that earlier, but I don't, okay, I won't. But looking towards next year, if we can try to balance those out.
The, the only piece I would add on that is, especially when you look at the end of the second quarter, we have to not only look at the quarters, but then what that would do to the semesters as well. And so you would put, your first semester would be much longer than your second semester at that point as well.
Thank you for that response. Appreciate that. Ms. Schulz wishes to speak on this amendment, but also, Ms. Schulz has indicated she has several amendments when we decide on this amendment, so I will recognize Ms. Schulz.
Yeah, I think we just had a, a bit of a kerfuffle on scheduling, because I had sent some amendments in on Monday during our work session, and unfortunately, it just, things got passed and they went that away. And, and I appreciate Nia Rica bringing up the quarter and, as we were just discussing, and so we'll be talking about that. The, I will say, along with my colleagues, I'm gonna, it's Thursday, you know, we were talking about this on Monday, and then all of a sudden, the calendar was posted, and it suddenly turned into the, the next school year starting on Wednesday. And I just, I don't know, my, my head spun when I saw that at the last second, in that there's been enough surprises in this calendar process that hopefully this will be the last time, this is like sort of, you know, maybe things are darkest before the dawn, that we'll get to passing a successive calendar in the spring, which I've been championing. I think that that's a great idea, is to get a year ahead. And I, and I thank Dr. Braybrand for being willing to open up that process and begin I guess I'm going to vote for this amendment, but I will say I have got some pretty significant concerns that if my, my motions that are going to show up successively to this do not pass, I think maybe for the first time ever, I'm not going to vote for a calendar. I do have concerns, extreme concerns about the three-hour early outs, both from an employee standpoint and from that which is best for students. But in, in terms of this amendment itself, I like the flexibility that is offered to students. I like moving the day back. I actually, I had another amendment that I would have offered, but I think it's going to be too complicated for tonight, that would have actually moved the start of the calendar back to Monday. So I definitely appreciate it starting on the Tuesday. So I, I will support this, but colleagues, be prepared for some quick, quick amendments to follow.
And I guess I would ask, because I now see your amendments, Ms. Schulz, did you share them with everybody? I know they will be on the screen.
I gave them to the clerk, so the clerk can put them up.
Okay, just making sure that everybody with ease can see what you're going to talk to. Ms. McLaughlin?
Well, I was actually thinking this is going to be one of our easier evenings, so I'm going to try and keep my comments brief. What we have on the table right now, despite what some of our colleagues have been speaking to, is just Mr. Moon's amendment. That's it. There's been a lot of talking outside of it by a lot of people. So stick, let's not confuse the audience and people at home. I very much appreciate what Mr. Moon has brought forward. I, I do support it. Dr. Braybrand, I think you said it best. We will have teachers who are going to be coming back off of their summer jobs, and, you know, making this change on them is going to be difficult. If they can finish out their summer job on a Friday, and maybe they flex work and do stuff on the weekend, because that's how they compress it, or people finish their holiday on a Saturday, and they're going to do some work on Sunday. But Mr. Moon, very much appreciate what you did. And I also think at the end of a school year, the last thing a teacher wants to have even mentally on their brain is, I gotta somehow muster up enough energy for a Monday the next week in June. So fully support it. Will speak to my other concerns about the calendar later on, but to this amendment, thank you, Mr. Moon, very glad you brought it to us.
Thank you. I have Ms. Palchek.
Thank you. Yes, just briefly to this amendment, I also will be supporting it because I agree that, A, we need to allow our teachers to come back at a reasonable date. And I agree that we've been fighting to start before Labor Day, and I was quite concerned about just three days before. So these are concerns I also wanted to bring up that really we should discuss and have a little bit of agreement for parameters we would like to see before the next calendar committee convenes. So I hope we can think about start dates, end dates, and other areas of concern before we move on to the next one. But I will be supporting Mr. Moon's motion, and I thank him for bringing it forward.
Okay, I will call for the vote on the amendment, and I will read it again so everybody understands what we are considering, and it is Mr. Moon's amendment. And the amendment is to restore the dates presented in calendar D for August of 2018 and June 2019 to include the start date for new teachers to be August 13, the returning teachers to commence their contract on August 17 as a teacher workday with flexibility to work remotely on that date, the first day of school for students to be on August 28, 2018, which is a Tuesday, right? And the last day of school to be June 13, which is a Thursday, 2019 for students, and the last day for teachers, June 14 for student, for teachers, which is a Friday. All right, I will call for a vote on that amendment. All those in favor? It is unanimous. Holy cow. Thank you. That amendment passes. It may be the only one, but.
Thank you for approving our calendar. Oh, no, is that the, that's just the amendment.
That's just the amendment. No, 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 no. We're, we're not done yet, but thank you, thank you, colleagues, for disposing of that one. Now I will call on Ms. Schulz, has three amendments. Ms. Schulz, for your first amendment.
Sorry, we're trying to do this live.
And please, my colleagues, if your light is on, yes, except that I, Ms. Schulz, your light is on because I'm recognizing you. Thank you.
Correct. And just, just as a preface, all of these are things that we've already talked about. Nothing here is a surprise. We actually covered a lot of this in depth. I move to amend the main motion by moving October 19, early release, staff development day, to November 12.
Okay, I have a question. Ms. Schulz, on the calendar that I'm looking at, October 19 is not an early release.
You took it away. Changed it. That's what happens when you do things on the fly.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
Do we see these languages somewhere?
It is in very small print. Can we enlarge the print a little bit? Or I'll tell you what.
Could you send them by email?
Could you send it by email? That would be great to all the members, because I can see it.
You know, for me, font has to be at least 200.
No, you have to have the eyes of a six-year-old. So, all right, Ms. Schulz, so what currently shows on the calendar that is on the table is October 19 is not an early release. So, decide what you want to do with that.
Right, so we're going to have to, because, and this is the problem of having the calendar changed just between the work session and now, we're going to have to go to the second amendment.
Okay, then you, you are withdrawing the first amendment?
Yes, because, yes, because the base calendar changed from our work session.
Okay, so we will go towards your second amendment. Wait, hold on before you start. My colleagues, do you now have it in your email so you can pull it up? If you wait a moment, it has been sent in your email. I want to give everybody a chance to read it so that Ms. Schulz can.
It's pretty simple. I move to amend the main motion by changing the end of the first quarter to October 31st.
October 30?
And this is to address, well.
Okay, all right, is there a second? Second by Ms. McLaughlin. Okay, Ms. Schulz, would you like to?
Right, and this is simply to address some of the student concerns that were raised, that the November 2 quarter end coincides with a lot of the early admission, college early admission deadlines, and it has an imbalance in the, when the length of the quarters are compared to the other quarters, which we resolved, we worked really hard to resolve it this, last year for this year's calendar, and then it got a little out of whack for next year. And I know it doesn't, it doesn't operate in perfect syncope with the days off for the election for the student planning day, but I think that our, our employees could certainly accommodate that, and it would take a huge burden off of, in particular, the high school students who are facing pretty significant deadlines at the exact same time.
Ms. McLaughlin, would you like to speak? And then I'm going to ask for staff comment on that, because we did discuss this on Monday, because I think we need, yes, Ms. McLaughlin?
Thank you. Yeah, I, I'm, Dr. Braybrand, I would ask the question that it, Dr. Braybrand, sorry. I know it's hard with the sidebars. With, with Ms. Schulz's amendment, one, and certainly, I think, Nia Rica, we appreciate that you've brought this up at the work session on Monday. And so here's my thinking on why I'm secondedating this. When we look at the first quarters of 46 days, second quarter's 44 days, if you support what Ms. Schulz is saying, you switch it to 31st, nothing has to change with the teacher workdays and planning days. It's only a matter of the grade book, is that they're going to basically say, okay, any graded assignments or things are now going to be logged in as being Tuesday, November 1st and 2nd, which, again, to, to what we're really trying to do here is, you'll have a little bit of a balance, a better balance between quarter 1 and 2, but more importantly, for our 12,000 seniors who are more and more, to 75% apply early action notification decision, and I just had my third son apply this year, so we were living it. That, that November 1 deadline, at the same exact time, these kids are finishing up the first quarter tests, quizzes, assignments, and everything. these kids are finishing up the first quarter tests, quizzes, assignments, and everything, it's a killer on our seniors. And so I think that this just looks like more, it's an administrative, you know, indication there. The teachers will still have two days to be able to work and wrap up the grades in the gradebook. To me, it's just a matter of when they can say, this one ended, and we're starting the next quarter. But the grades can still all stay, logistically and administratively, being done the same time.
Okay, I think we need some staff input.
Yeah, I'm going to ask Dr. Ramey. I know you were part of that committee. And just define what happens on the day that has the QE and the issue of the gradebook ending a couple of days early. Did that come up at all, Dr. Ramey?
And while you're answering that, can you also answer when grades actually then are done and calculated, and how that impacts what we heard from senior students with early admission? Sort of, we need to sort of repeat all of that information.
So I would need some help on that second question. There was discussion on the first part, and we actually heard that from our teacher associations tonight about having those days right at the end of the quarters in terms of right after them for them to work, and especially the importance of those days after the first quarter at the elementary level, given the parent-teacher conferences that take place. And so I think that, from a system perspective, yes, the administrative burden wouldn't probably be that much. But I have a feeling that our teachers would see that as an additional burden and a concern to separate those two out. We didn't really consider separating a teacher workday from the end of a quarter during the committee, so I can't really speak to that conversation, because it wasn't ever something that really came up as part of a concept that might be implemented.
And I guess, because I will recognize Ms. Vedakand as well, because your light is on. For students who are applying early, is the expectation that their grades will be submitted immediately? Okay, well, I need to have staff respond.
No.
No, all right. So the fact that the teacher workdays would still be November 5 and November 6, so in other words, grades would not be turned in until the normal time that they would be turned in.
I think the fair thing to say here is this, for my teaching days. There are some teachers I taught with 15 or 20 years ago. They'd end their gradebook early, just because. There's another group of teachers that liked it nice, neat, and clean. I'm finishing my gradebook, my gradebook is done, it ends, and now I have two days to clean up the gradebook, make sure the grades are right. They're due in a couple of days later by administration. The truth is, we just didn't have a dialogue as part of the committee work or with our teacher associations about whether that would be seen as an undue burden. I'd be tentative about wanting to say it, but I could certainly explore it for the March calendar after greater, for the year after, after greater involvement of some teacher feedback. That's just the honest truth.
Okay, Ms. Vedakand, I would like to speak to this.
Okay, so, thank you for bringing up this motion, actually. So, one possibility that I'm thinking about is that whatever the current grading deadline is, if the quarter ends on the November 2, we could keep that as the same grading deadline for if the quarter ends on October 31, so that we're not taking time away from teachers to be able to do grades. But a bigger part of why the quarter should end on the 31st is not just so that high school seniors can get their applications in on time, it's also that first-quarter senior grades are often part of those applications. So just as important junior year grades are, first-quarter senior grades are often that much more important, or they could correct like an imbalance in junior year grades. So having the quarter end on October 31 means that students are able to dedicate more time and aren't as stressed out about end-of-the-quarter exams or projects and things like that. So even if grades are sent to the colleges at the same time and are calculated at the same time, it ends up being okay, because students know what their grades are and aren't stressed out with those end-of-the-quarter deadlines at the same time that they're also stressed out about college applications.
The district only sends seventh semester grades to colleges. That's after the semester, not after the quarter. In terms of the district-wide, we send the seventh semester grades.
Okay, so again, to clarify, students who are applying early, their grades are not sent from the first-quarter grades, is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay, is there any other information from staff that?
They don't send semester grades. I know that from working with my transcript office. But sometimes students will send their report cards as evidence of that. So our transcript offices don't officially do that, but students will send their, like, photocopies of their report cards and things like that to their colleges.
And these are for students who are applying early, okay. Does anybody else need any other information from staff before we vote on this amendment? And this amendment proposes to end the first quarter on October 31, but leave the teacher workdays where they are, indicating that, for some students who are applying early for college, that this might make it easier for them. Okay? Oh, thank you, that's what I wanted to know, if anybody else needed to talk. Ms. Hines?
Thank you. You know, I'm taking this from the perspective of an elementary teacher. And, you know, those two planning days at the end of the first quarter are just particularly important at elementary school, because they're the days that you meet with parents. It really is, more than any other quarter of the year, I think, for the elementary teacher, it really is a closing out of the first part of the year. And then, you know, so you get your grades done over the weekend. You prep your conversation with parents over the weekend. You close out the quarter with the conferences, and then you take some of that first two days to get ready for the second quarter, which is a whole lot of planning. You're mapping out, you know, the second quarter of the year. So for me to go, and this is my perspective and my experience as an elementary teacher, to go from Wednesday to Thursday, and you've made a quarter change, and you've got to have all your grades done on Wednesday, and plan for the next quarter Wednesday, Wednesday night, when you go home. I mean, I, and I don't, I'm personally not yet convinced, because maybe I'm a little bit confused by it, how one or two days at that point, between first and second quarter, makes a difference for high school kids. I mean, I think if it's October 31 and they have things due on November 1, well, that's going to be a heck of a week, no matter how you slice it, right? I don't know that, I just, and I don't know, I don't, I think if they're going to send their grades, while they're not getting their grades, say the quarter ends on October 31, I don't think they're getting their grades on November 1, unless I'm wrong. They're not going to get them till the next week anyway, whether the quarter ends on Wednesday or Friday of that week. So, I don't know. I worry about doing this, especially without having feedback from teachers about what difference this would make. We haven't floated it with anybody. I think maybe this is something we should talk about with teacher associations and students. You know, we have some student voices here, but we certainly don't have very many here tonight. So, I mean, I'd rather not do this this year.
Okay, I see Ms. McLaughlin, would you like to speak again?
Yeah, I wanted just a quick go-back. I understand what Ms. Hines was saying, and as an elementary school teacher, she's got the direct classroom experience. My sense from this was not about that it would change at all, the work that the teachers would do. I think Dr. Brabran said it best. When you close your gradebook out and then you start your new one, the teachers still wouldn't be meeting with their families until the Monday, Tuesday. They're either going to be finishing out grades on a Friday and have to work over the weekend in order to talk to their kids about, the parents about the grades. Instead, you finish on a Wednesday, and, you know, they decide when they want to use their work time to be able to prepare grades and then talk to elementary school parents. So, you know, that part, I think I just wasn't really clear on how it burdens the elementary school teachers. It actually gives them an extra couple of days before they're going to go into conference time, because you've closed out the gradebook two days sooner. The issue here, as I understand it, and from what I've seen, is if we have the quarter ending on Friday, the 2nd, then what you've got your seniors contending with is tests, quizzes, and, you know, test, quizzes, and exams, projects, whatever you name it, is all got to be due by Friday, November 2. Meanwhile, these kids are juggling anywhere from two, three, sometimes four early applications, all due on November 1. If we finish it on the 31st, it at least lets them go, okay, my tests and quizzes are complete as of the 31st, and then I've got a full 24 hours where there's not going to be any tests, no quizzes, and I can finish up any essays that are still left. And anyone who's filed these applications and looked at the Common App and You're Online, a day is a gift. So, I don't, I'm not championing anything, because honestly, you just heard me. My kids are graduated out. But I've watched it, and I have heard seniors after seniors, every single year, say to us, why do we always have the quarter end right when these kids are trying to file the deadline for early application? The stress level is insane. Now, Dr. Brabran, the other solution would be that while we study this some more for the next year's calendar, I'd love it if we would just then have some dialogue with our teachers and the seniors, who have seniors, and say, can we get those tests and quizzes done closer to 31st and not be testing these kids up until exactly November 2? And then at least we can, that's a compromise. But I will say that, looking at what these kids go through, I think we have to be very mindful. And Nehirika, again, I think you spoke well to it. But I understand that this is sort of something coming at the last minute, and people want to take more time.
Okay, I will speak on this, and then I think Ms. Schultz would like to go back? Yes, Ms. Schultz? Okay. I won't support this. It certainly is certainly appropriate for us to discuss when we're talking about the calendar after that. I am concerned that this, while it may be a good idea for some of the seniors who are applying early, I'm concerned about the impact on the kindergarten through 11th grade teachers and children. So I will not be supporting this. Ms. Schultz?
Okay, I just want to go back to this notion that somehow, if you have a quarter end not on the Friday, that that somehow throws teachers askew, and teachers are not able to function, because it's 48 hours earlier, and then their world has to stop by starting a second quarter on a Thursday. The reality is, is that they're going to be teaching their curriculum along a linear calendar, and one day to the next isn't going to matter on what they're teaching in the classroom, K through 11. What does matter is in block scheduling, particularly when you have students with a term that, in a quarter, that's several days longer than other days, that on a block schedule, those two additional days mean those are two additional days of testing leading up to a quarter end at the same time as those college apps. If you move back the quarter end those two days, then it's likely that quarter end testing is actually going to start the week before because of block scheduling. Because you only have three days in Monday, Tuesday, and Wednesday to the 31st, where you have testing. You can't fit in all the quarter end testing and all the quarter end assignments. So you're going to start the quarter end assignments with a weekend before. So they're going to be leading up into the last week of October. Then they'll have the weekend, and they'll have three more days to the quarter end. And so you're going to move back all of that stress, like Nehirika was talking about. You're going to back all that up to starting the weekend before, rather than crunching that all down to the Friday. Then there'll be no testing that happens the previous, or no assignments that are due necessarily the previous week. And for those students who are applying, they know their grades. They're able to articulate their grades, even if it's not going to be followed with an official transcript by FCPS for all those who are applying early admission. And I feel like we're, that we're over-complicating something, which we're very good at doing for some reason, on moving back two days that could substantially change for our seniors. You know, if we value and talk about things that are good for the mental health and wellness of our students, this is the kind of thing where we can demonstrate very easily that we can work with our teachers and say, hey, we're going to start assignments that are due the previous week leading up into quarter end assignments before those first-quarter grades, and we're going to help out our kids who are applying to colleges. We can over-complicate this thing, and it looks like we're going to. Or we could just say, you know what? This is probably pretty good for the mental health and wellness of our students to undo a burden on them. So we'll make the choice.
Okay, I have Ms. Hines, and then I have Ms. Darnikofex and Ms. Polczek. Ms. Hines?
I think the problem is, that I believe making this change would over-complicate a lot of other things. And we don't really know that until we've talked to people who are actually on the ground, in the classrooms, in the field, doing the work. That, if we did this, it would be the only quarter end without a teacher workday right after it, between the end of that quarter and the beginning of the next quarter. In elementary school, it's not the case that that Thursday and Friday would be extra days to grade. They would be days that teachers would have to figure out how to instruct those kids at the beginning of the next quarter without any time to plan. And so I think there's a good chance, and this is just my opinion as one teacher, and my point here really is we need to hear from other teachers, right? But my fear is that those would not be high-quality days for elementary kids, right? Or anyone in any other grade who uses those days to plan between quarter end and quarter beginning. And, you know, do we want to have sort of low-quality days for elementary kids so that we can make a change that we think might work for some high school kids? I don't think so. I just don't think we're ready to make this decision, and I think it is complicated.
Okay, I know Dr. Brabran would like to speak as well.
Let me just say really quickly, I get the sense in the discussion around this. One, I'd love to have gotten more teacher input, which I'm not able to do. But another may be, I'm better understanding the problem. The answer may not be through the calendar, but through some administration work, particularly with 12th-grade teachers. And I'd love to have an opportunity to perhaps, regardless of what you decide, if you do it, we'll do it. If not, there may still be a way beyond the calendar to try to get at really talking to those 12th-grade teachers and saying, it's time to wrap up your gradebooks early without having to change the whole calendar. So I'll explore that as well, regardless of the decision made by the board.
Thank you, Dr. Brabran. I have Ms. Polczek and Ms. Darnikofex.
Thank you. I want to, first of all, voice a concern and a frustration right now. I don't know the reason why this was brought to us so late. I heard the reasons, but I am hoping, and I will ask all of board members, if you bring motions, please ensure, let's do our best to get them out early, as soon as possible. If they are not posted, I'm going to ask that it is also all responsibility. It is not just staff to ensure that it happens. So that's my frustration, number one. Number two, the lack of ability because of that and because of input from teachers and staff, I think it's very hard to make this decision right now. I think that's a good compromise, because it seems that we are taking the, putting to peril all of our elementary school teachers. Someone who only had a half a day to plan for her second quarter, it's not enough. And our elementary teachers definitely need it. So I think, going back to what Dr. Brabran said, half of the teachers might close their books early. The other half will be there until the end. And my additional concern is that if we say, and add this complication, oh, now the quarter ends on the 31st, but students will know that their teachers will not be working on report cards until Monday and Tuesday of the following week, I have a concern that students are going to be all over their teachers to be taking late work, to be doing remakes, to doing all these kinds of additional work while teachers are trying to teach their new quarter and get ready for grades. So I think that's an additional burden and many others we may not have considered, because we've not spoken to our teachers. In addition, I don't think this is over-complicating. This is oversimplifying the impact that it could have on our system and our teachers. So I think we have to take it into greater consideration and being asked to look at three amendments at the last minute that could have a huge impact. I'm actually hoping we don't do this in the future. And finally, I do, I think I appreciate Ms. McLaughlin and Dr. Brabran bringing additional considerations. If this is an issue that is affecting our seniors, let's have that conversation. Let's make sure it is inclusive of teachers, of students, of families, so that we can come up with a solution that does not negatively impact the rest of our system. And so, because of that, I will not be supporting this amendment.
Ms. Darnikofex?
I appreciate Dr. Brabran's comments. I think the, that's the way to work on this issue for our senior students. I think it's through talking to the teachers. And I think many teachers, as a parent of a daughter who just graduated in the spring, I think many teachers do take that into consideration. I'm not saying all do, but I think that has to be. I'm not saying all do, but I think that has to be, it, it has to be just something, just like you have sent out communications about winter break. I think it's one of those things that can be handled that way. So, I appreciate that, and I appreciate Ms. Schultz trying to do something, but again, feeling like it's at the last minute and not being able to see the ramifications. And I am kind of uncomfortable with that, the semester ending and then having two days, which I feel, you know, would be difficult to get the students wrapped around once they know that they were ending the semester and then having two days off and then starting again. So, I feel it's a little bit of a disjointed schedule by doing it that way. So, Dr. Braybrand, you know, put that on your work agenda to do as we move forward, but I wouldn't be supporting this. But I appreciate the issues that have been brought forward as a result of it.
Thank you. I will call for a vote on this amendment, and I will restate it. It is to amend the main motion by changing the end of the first quarter to October 31st. Those in favor of the amendment? Ms. Schultz? Those opposed to the amendment? Ms. Evans, Ms. Palchak, McElveen, Corbett Sanders, Strauss, Moon, Hines, Darnett Kofax, Keys, Kamara, abstention, Mr. Wilson, and Ms. McLaughlin. Thank you. I will call on Ms. Schultz for another motion, and please, if you do not wish to speak, turn your light off. If you wish to speak, turn your light on. I will call on Ms. Schultz. Thank you.
I mean, this little light of mine, right? I move to amend the main motion by revising the three-hour early release days to two-hour early release days.
Is there a second? Second by Ms. McLaughlin. Ms. Schultz, would you like to speak to your motion?
Yeah, and I'm going to just clarify. These were given on Monday and there, there are extenuating circumstances that most of my colleagues know about.
Yes, and we understand that. It's okay.
And I want to be perfectly clear to say that I expected these to be posted on Monday. And it's not anybody's fault in particular, but life happens.
It may have been my fault, Ms. Schultz, and I just apologize for you.
These, this greatest degree of feedback that I had when all four calendars were originally published, at town halls, after actually some of Dr. Braybrand's community meetings in the different regions, by email, by Facebook, by all different posts, were the concern about the three hour, of all, of all the things, not, not earlier, starting in August, not length sub breaks. The single greatest pushback that I had were the number of early release days and in particular, the three-hour early release. And I, and I understand and appreciate why Dr. Ramey and the working group addressed the need to do PD in a different way or quote-unquote "make it more meaningful." But, you know, I go back to sort of the, the major premise of what we do is to benefit kids. And we can't make PD more convenient for adults and make education less meaningful for kids and harder for parents. And we live in the nation's worst traffic, sending kids to school to effectively have a little bit of time in the morning and then to go, I mean, some elementary schools have five lunches. They already start lunch at like 10:20 in the morning. And so, the concept of intentionally structuring an academic day to meet the needs of students and to serve students that undercuts them by releasing them three hours, and, you know, in my neck of the woods, sometimes that means a 45, 50-minute bus ride. So, they're released three hours early and they have almost two hours of bus time on top of it. It just, it fundamentally doesn't make sense. I feel like the working group needs to go back and keep working and maybe, just like my colleagues pointed out on this, on the previous motion, that maybe it's something that we can address in the next calendar. I think a three-hour early release thing, if that's really what you want to do or you want to restructure professional development, do it in the next calendar. But this is too great of an impact to the education of every single student who we're going to affect with these three-hour early release days. And I don't, I don't know that it functionally, the benefit that's derived for the adults on the backs of kids and families is, is a complete imbalance, in my opinion. And so, I can't support this. I, I appreciate that the working group did it, but just like the previous motion, we didn't quote-unquote "have" the feedback. We definitely didn't get the feedback from the families. And many, many educators I know are not supporting the three-hour early release. So, while some may have in an order to get the trade-off of some more meaningful PD in the end, I just don't think that this is a formula that works.
Ms. McLaughlin, would you like to speak to your second?
I would. This is actually an issue that we talked extensively at the work session, and I too heard from my community that the, you know, switching from a two-hour early release to a three-hour early release, you're now talking about these, it's not early release anymore. It's almost a half-day. You are, you know, you're talking about a six-and-a-half-hour instructional day and now you've backed it down to three, three-and-a-half hours. Ms. Schultz captured it well. You're talking about how long you put kids on a bus. And before I conclude my, my remarks, either Ms. Michael or Mr. Plattenberg, is either one here still? Okay. I, totally rough estimate. It's been thrown out many times, but what is the average daily cost that we spend as a division when we bus kids to school?
So, in general, if I'm thinking really rough math, we spend about $150 million busing. You know, we have about 180 school days. So, I would use that kind of rough division in terms of looking at what we spend on average for a day.
So, just a little under a million a day?
Yes.
Okay. So, you know, the reason I, I bring that up is because I think first and foremost, we're talking about why we're all here. We're all here because it's about K-12 instruction, and we want students to, to learn and be successful in the classroom. And yet, when we talk to students, and especially again at the, at the middle school and high school level, where there has the black, the block scheduling, you reduce instruction time down from 90 minutes down to 45 minutes. And so, it's, it's a real impact, what we're talking about doing here. And just as everybody spoke eloquently on the last motion, and, you know, I abstained because I thought, I think that there is a lot that we have to look at in making a change like that. And I like that Dr. Braybrand has a solution. But on this one, when, when the board received from Dr. Braybrand just yesterday about sort of further explanations to why it would be better to have a three-hour PD versus a two-hour PD, I don't discount at all the merits, especially they were saying for elementary school teachers. But it, it's at what cost? And so, I don't even want to necessarily go to the impact it has on, on working parents. I think that is a piece of it for sure, but when you're having to make, get home because your child's getting out two hours early, three, definitely cuts into their workday too and their commute times to get to their office only to turn around. But there's a whole lot that can go into what working parents do to juggle these, these early release days. But it's no longer an early release day. It's pretty much a half-day. I, I don't understand how when we switched from full-day Mondays and we built in $7 to $10 million more to do the triple-T time so that we could preserve elementary school planning time and all of that, it was my understanding then that we were okay. And so, this solution or this, this change of switching to three-hour early release, I asked staff at the Monday work session, "What other school divisions around the region do this? That their, that their early release isn't two days, it's three days." And I, I don't recall that there's any awareness. And so, I, I think, Ms. Schultz, you said it best. With any reservations we've had about some of our changes on this calendar that were true dramatic, I don't understand why the rush to put this in place for this year when our communities have said they're conflicted on the three-hour early release. Why aren't we just sticking with two? And to Mr. Hickerson, thank you from FEA, making the point, when you make changes to the calendar, try to go minimal versus, you know, having big upsets. I respect my 11 colleagues. And if you guys haven't heard the same pushback on the three hours, I completely understand. For me, I definitely heard this as being one of the biggest negatives that was proposed. And so, that's why I'm supporting this motion because I feel really strongly that it's premature for us to do this for the 18 calendar.
Ms. Darnett Kofax?
I was not at the Monday work session. I, I was feeling a little under the weather, so I didn't hear the conversation around this. But I, and I haven't had the opportunity to reach out to all my colleagues, but I did reach out to Mr. Hickerson, and he did talk to me very briefly, but that the community continued, the teacher community, you know, is split on this. I think there's a little bit of a conflict within the parent community as well. And when you talk about a three-hour, three-hour early release, it is a half-day. I mean, it is for all essential purposes. I will be supporting this motion because I feel it is one of those things that requires further conversation, further deliberation. I think we're losing a lot of instructional time. And I, and because I wasn't at the work session, some of the things you mentioned while I was in the back, Ms. McLaughlin, I was watching on the TV, that's what I don't have an understanding about because this was supposed to, when we had the early release Monday with the triple-T time and things like that. And it's something that I unfortunately didn't have the opportunity to ask on Monday, but because of that, I would like a little bit more restraint on moving forward on this in this year's calendar and keep the two-hour early releases rather than the three.
Okay. I will speak. I will not support the amendment. We've heard very strong feedback from the elementary teachers and principals. I know it is somewhat mixed at the high school level, but for the elementary teachers, anything less than three hours, because of the way they operate and getting their kids out of the building and on the buses, and their need to be able to have team planning with IAs and others who must go home at the end of the contract day, it is critical for the elementary teachers. I think we clearly will discuss this again when, in March, when we look at the next calendar. So, I will not support this amendment, but I will call for the vote. And the amendment is, hold on. The amendment is to amend the main motion by revising the three-hour early release days to two-hour early release days. Those in favor of the amendment? It is Mr. Wilson, Ms. McLaughlin, Ms. Schultz, Ms. Darnett Kofax. Those opposed? It is Evans, Palchak, McElveen, Corbett Sanders, Strauss, Moon, Hines, Keys, Kamara. The motion fails. We are now back to the main motion as amended. So, I will call for the vote on that. And again, to refresh everybody's memory.
Several of us put our lights on to speak to the main motion. Because we've only spoken to the amendments.
Sure. Thank you very much. Thank you for getting those lights on. Okay. I see Ms. Evans and Ms. McLaughlin. Ms. Evans, would you like to speak to the main motion?
Yes. We're back to the main motion, so I wanted to make a few comments about where we are. Again, I wanted to thank Dr. Braybrand and staff for making the improvements because I do think that this calendar is one of the best I've seen. It's, it's balanced, it's rational, the quarters end in a, in a good place. I certainly support adding the full day off before Thanksgiving. I think that that's something that would be beneficial to students and to staff. I, it makes sense, particularly on a day when so many people are absent anyway. Let's just, you know, call it a holiday. At the same time, I was very pleased to see the addition, the change of the early release from September 21st to September 18th to coincide with Yom Kippur. The faith community, as many of members of the audience and of course, all the board members know, have been asking us for some time to please make sure we accommodate the major Muslim holidays and the major Jewish holidays. And so, while this calendar doesn't do that completely, we're, we're making some progress on it. Eid el-ad-ha, I'm probably pronouncing that wrong, is on August 22nd, so that's before school starts for the students. So, that's one where we, we have a, a break in terms of the calendar. The other Eid celebration observance is on June 5th, starts sunset June 4th, goes into June 5th. That's something where we will need to communicate again very strongly to teachers and staff that that's a day, that that's a religious observance for quite a few of our students, and we need to make sure that final exams aren't there, that special graduation ceremonies or, or events are not put in, in that day. And so, to have the early release day on Yom Kippur will help our students who in the past have had to choose between their religious obligations and their academic obligations. They still will, but it will be for a half-day, which is a little bit different. So, I appreciate the, the accommodation. I think this is something we still need to continue to discuss. I know we've said for some time that, that we get the message out to our teachers and staff. We need to keep doing that. We need to keep communicating to, to make sure that everyone who, who needs to is, is accommodated with their religious observances. So, with that, I would say we have a very good start with the Stars. I like the Stars for the major religious holidays. We, we've had some back and forth today, the discussion about the fact that in, in all four cases, the, the holiday starts at sunset one day and then goes through the next day. So, a small point of reference, I think we probably should make sure that the Stars are put, put on the day where students are most likely to be taking the day off, just so, so teachers are, are familiar with that. So, I also appreciate the, Dr. Braybrand taking out the blackout days that teachers had, had told us that was, was something that, that they were concerned about. So, with that, I just want to say that I, I do fully support this calendar. Thank you.
Ms. McLaughlin?
I, I know we talked about this extensively, but I, I do want to quickly echo what Ms. Evans said. Dr. Braybrand, you and, and the staff are to be commended. There's no doubt in my mind that this is one of the most engaged efforts I've seen in my six years on the board to really working with as many stakeholders as possible. This calendar at our work session started to feel like the Rubik's Cube. You know, you do one twist and a turn and then the whole color's off, and you got to figure it out. I was very appreciative that you walked, you came away from the Monday work session and you all worked so hard that the public may not be aware, but they then created version E that we're looking at tonight, which the board only got on Wednesday. So, a lot of it incorporated great recommendations from my colleagues. But one of the changes that took me a bit by surprise is that Columbus Day is now, was it, a staff planning day. So, while it still remains a student holiday, we've taken that holiday away from our employees. And for all of the angst that our employee, that my colleagues had up here tonight about last-minute changes, not knowing how our employees feel about it, I mean, I, I know from having young athletes, Columbus Day weekend, if your kid plays soccer, families are gone. I mean, the tournaments are all up and down the eastern seaboard. And when I used to ask Dan Stor, "Can we please trade out Veterans Day for Columbus Day?", he said, "Good luck with that because that is like soccer Mecca weekend." We've made a major change on that for our employees who also have school-aged children and will be affected by that Columbus Day change. And there was no conversation about it yet. That's because this change happened and we didn't even notice it. Again, Dr. Braybrand, to commend you all. I, I really chase, you have the, you know, incredible affability to roll with 12 voices of the board as well as endless voices from the community. So, please know that, that with all sincerity, I appreciate this. I appreciate that, Dr. Braybrand, we talked about and you said, "For our community, we know how important it is to get our calendar out much, much sooner." And so, And so rather than us voting here in December, the day before winter break starts, we're going to be really talking about this in spring for a whole year in advance beyond that. So it'd be almost a year and a half. But, you know, I will say at a macro level, I think our board needs to really be more reflective of what we're trying to accomplish here. Because on the one hand, I hear we want to start even a week earlier, and that's what started the whole hullabaloo with version A, B, C, then D, now E, is there was a suggestion, let's go two weeks before Labor Day. Well, because that would maximize learning with high-stakes testing. Well, keep in mind, as Mr. Hickerson also said, if we lose this waiver from Virginia in about a year or so, the boomerang effect back on our families of, whoops, we lost that, we're back to post-Labor Day start, I think we have to be very cautious of moving that. Right now, we start a week earlier, but on a high school block schedule, that means two extra instruction days. And yet now we're voting in to do a three-hour release that cuts their instruction time during the year to half a day. So I think we still have some work to get where we need to be. I will just again reiterate that I'm a little worried, colleagues, that taking Columbus Day, which is a federal holiday, away from our employees, when we already don't recognize Veterans Day, which is also a federal holiday, for all of our employees who will be required to work on Columbus Day and Veterans Day now, they potentially, their spouses and their family, you know, are going to be missing out on having that holiday together. So I have shared this in other votes. When I feel that I do not have sufficient amount of information to make an informed decision, I will not necessarily vote no, but I'm going to abstain. And based on the things that you've heard me talk about tonight, I think an abstention is a way that I can signal to my community. I don't think that we have enough information to make an informed vote. And to my colleagues, one final thing I'll say is, I actually talked to Ms. Strauss and Ms. Corbett Sanders about postponing because when version E showed up in our inbox yesterday, I said, why aren't we postponing till the first meeting in January? And that allows us to go back to our communities and talk to people about it. But I was told that there really wasn't any expression among other board members of concern to vote tonight. So if you want to give me a little bit of a, you know, credit here, I didn't give you another motion to talk about tonight.
Thank you. The next speaker is Ms. Palchek, and then Mr. Moon.
Thank you. I did speak quite a bit, but wanted to add a couple of things. And thank you for the reminder, Ms. Evans. I'm especially thankful that after years of advocacy and communication by some of the religious leaders, faith leaders in our community, directly to our schools, to our principals, that we are taking the step to, A, be thoughtful and look at when can we give some time. You know, we're not saying there will, we will have offer every religious holiday, Rosh Hashanah, kids will be in school, Yom Kippur, appreciate that students will only miss part of the day as opposed to the full day. And as Ms. Evans said, we looked at both Eids, and luckily for one, our students will be out. So part of it is that, is thoughtfulness. It's not a formula, because as you can tell, if we had the perfect calendar, Dr. Bray-Bran, man, you should be Secretary of Education at that point. But beyond that, I did get another email today from a constituent, Muslim constituent, who said that he's just concerned that there's lack of understanding for his children in school. And so while putting the stars on the dates, and I actually like it on the eve because that is when observances begin, I know that's what Arlington did, we can look at it and explain that students may be out for that whole evening and just being cognizant of that. While it's not full understanding, I think it's a first step for staff, for families, for PTAs, and for the community to understand when they're planning, when students or families might be impacted for the religious observances. As you know, we are out on Christmas, we are out on Easter and Good Friday, and I think it's important for us to start to look at other important religious holidays. Beyond that, looking forward, the Arlington calendar is now fully bilingual, so I will put a pitch for us to start to look at that as one of four of our students. I know, I'm never going to give up, Dr. Remy, one out of four students in our schools are Hispanic. I think that would be a great thing to look at. And finally, yes, it is not a perfect calendar, but I do think, and it was not a perfect process, but I think it was a good process. I think we can improve upon it for the next time and hopefully continue to get the waiver for early starts. But I do agree with Ms. McLaughlin that we have to be mindful, that we do not know beyond next year how much longer we'll be able to start early. So I think that has to be taken into consideration when we make changes and to look at gradual rather than drastic ones. So beyond that, I want to thank everyone, our community, my fellow board members, and staff especially, for all of your work on this better-than-past calendars, in my opinion. And I hope that we can give you more information before we prepare the next one to hopefully take some heartburn out of the process, Dr. Remy. So I will be supporting this motion.
Mr. Moon?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Our support of the main motion is amended, but would like to make a request, Superintendent. I'm sure he probably has been thinking about this already, to monitor the attendance of our students on those couple of days before the Thanksgiving break.
Okay, Ms. Schultz.
So as grateful as I am to staff for trying to work with a group leading up to the calendar this year, I feel like we've arrived, even yesterday, to a changing calendar that is difficult for our community to grasp. And I've never seen as much turmoil in the community over what we're trying to do. And I'm not exactly sure what happened along the way. And I know there are things that have to be done, like professional development, but I feel like we've traded on this calendar professional development for our families and for the education of children. And for the six-year-running veterans are at the back burner. We've just decided that soccer is more important, Columbus Day is more important, when we do professional development is more important than being in a county where you have the most veterans of any county in the United States of America. And I just, I'm at the point where I just can't tolerate it anymore. I just, I am flabbergasted that we don't have the creativity, you know, neighboring Prince William seems to be able to do it. And yes, they have a shorter winter break, but they have some additional flexibility created elsewhere in the calendar. And we just have decided we're not, I mean, at this point, I think we've just, we've said, we, between staff and this board and our outreach, that we were unwilling to listen to whether it's the concerns of the seniors applying to colleges, the concerns of our military families and our veterans, the concerns of the educators, half the educators who don't necessarily agree with the way the PD was done. And I'm hoping this is like the grand finale in not-great calendars and that the spring, you know, with what portends with spring and new life, that we're going to breathe new life into the calendar cycle. But I'm disappointed that we've arrived at the end where it's more about last-minute, you know, machinations on day changes. And if you're the right person offering an amendment that can fix something that appeared 24 hours ago, it's okay. But if you're not, it's not. And I just, I don't think this is, again, this is not great work by and between staff and the board. It isn't. And sometimes you just have to say it, we just have to own it, and we just have to know going into the spring that we will endeavor to communicate much more clearly with our community and work hard to solicit their input. Because I have a feeling there's going to be a lot of people who are really upset with this calendar. These three-hour early releases are not going to sit well with working families, and, you know, they are the backbone of most of our student population. And the feedback is not going to be terrific, and I'm not sure who's speaking for them right now. We've seemed to focus on PD for some, not all, and not necessarily the voices of families. And I just feel like somebody has to speak up for them.
Mr. McElveen?
So I would agree with the preceding commentary that this has been unnecessarily messy. And I don't recall, during my tenure at least, when we've gotten to this point, and it's been such a mess. I think it's been messy in two areas. First, what was brought to us in the first place, and then second, what has ensued tonight. I think there's still a misunderstanding in the community. I hear it to this day that the calendar options that were put out to begin with came from the board. There has not been enough effort at the administrative level to clarify the process by which our calendar is proposed and then adopted. So I think even at people that understand our system very well, there's still that misunderstanding that persists. I do think there have been some bright moments, I think, where we have relented on the issues of the flexible workday and on blackout days. Those have been some bright spots, but I would agree with those who have said that we have probably opened ourselves to warranted criticism with what we are adopting tonight. And I'm sure many of us are not entirely clear on what we are adopting tonight at this point. So I do look forward to the efforts that are put forth this coming year to, whether through PEC or other venerable institutions, to gather better community input prior to the process that we have just completed. So I guess I will be voting in favor of this, but not without reservation.
Okay, I will call for the vote on the motion as amended. For anybody who is just tuning in, the amendment that was approved calls for the first day of school for students to be Tuesday, August 28th, 2018. The first teacher workday for teachers, not new teachers, but other continuing contract teachers, is August 17th, but it is a flexible to work remotely on that date. And the last day for students will be June 13th, 2019, and that is a Thursday. And the last day for teachers will be June 14th, and that is a Friday. And those were the, yeah, June 14th is a Friday. Okay, so that is what we are voting on. All those in favor? It is Evans, Palchek, McElveen, Corbett Sanders, Strauss, Moon, Hines, Darnett-Kofax, Keys-Gamara. Those opposed? Those abstaining? Wait, Mr. Wilson, is that opposed or abstaining?
Opposed.
Opposed, thank you. Mr. Wilson is opposed. Those abstaining is McLaughlin and Schultz. Thank you, that motion passes. The next item of business is the mid-year budget review, and I will call on Ms. Evans for a motion.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I move that the school board approve revenue and expenditure changes reflected in the FY 2018 mid-year budget review as detailed in the agenda item, and authorize the superintendent to use the school board flexibility reserve to address Justice High School renaming costs not to exceed $267,741 in FY 2018, with any subsequent private funds raised used to replenish the flexibility reserve.
Seconded by Mr. Moon.
Seconded.
Ms. Evans, would you like to speak to your motion?
I would, Madam Chair. First of all, I want to thank Kristin Michael and Susan Quinn and the budget staff for their work on the mid-year review. As a reminder, we had a presentation at our last regular board meeting on the mid-year review and an extensive conversation about it at our Monday work session. The most significant piece here is a set aside of about $4 million for FCPS ON to start phasing in a one-to-one technology initiative to start closing the digital divide and to build on what we have done so far and continue that work. The mid-year review also anticipates savings of about $1 million because of lower-cost options for bus radios. On the Justice High School piece, I will take a minute to make clear to the public what we're doing and why. The superintendent on Monday brought us his implementation plan for the transition to the new name, and the board discussed it at length at our Monday work session. The plan calls for making the change this summer for the start of the 2018-19 school year rather than waiting until the next year. And I do agree, and I believe most of us agree, that that is preferable. To do that, certain items, mainly the fall sports uniforms, need to be ordered in early 2018. So the superintendent has asked for authority to use the funding out of the flexibility reserve for that purpose. The main motion enables the superintendent to use up to $267,741 from the $8 million flexibility reserve, which is already appropriated as part of this year's budget, so it does not increase the total budget. As private donations come in to support the name change, the upfront funding coming out of the reserve are to be reimbursed, and so it is supposed to be repaid as private donations come in. The board at our Monday work session reached consensus to add this authorization into the mid-year review as requested by the superintendent. In approving the name change, the board directed the superintendent to create a mechanism for private funding with the expectation that private funding will pay for a substantial portion of the costs. There is currently a donations page on the FCPS website, and donors have started to contribute. And I want to thank anyone who has gone to that webpage and made their donation. We do still need, as we've heard tonight from some community members, we do still need a true fundraising plan. And the board on Monday did ask the superintendent to partner with the community to help develop a plan and empower them to energetically seek private donations for this effort. That's still to come, and I remain hopeful of significant support. I know the superintendent plans to move forward on that quickly and meet with community members to help them get started in earnest on that effort. In the meantime, the superintendent and the school need to be able to deal with early upfront costs, and this authorization enables them to move forward with that so we don't lose time in the meantime. Staff on Monday also brought us further refined cost estimates, which now stand at about half of the original ballpark figures that we were given. They found lower-cost alternatives and have let us know that competitive bidding will most likely bring those costs down further. And I know community members continue to work on finding further cost savings, as well as you heard from Mr. Waters tonight. At the same time, this inventory exercise around the name change has also highlighted some very real equity issues. And this is something that we as a board and as a community need to follow up on. The vast majority of the costs outlined are for new athletic and marching band uniforms. All of these costs for the athletic equipment and the athletic uniforms, marching band uniforms, would normally be replaced in the next three years anyway, without a name change. But the school's principal has let us know that Stewart/Justice High School usually doesn't have the funds to replace its uniforms in the normal replacement cycle like other high schools can. Apart from the name change, we have an obligation to make sure this high school isn't short-changed because of the school's demographics. That's something we do need to address, whether as part of this effort or as a larger look at the issue of equity. I urge my colleagues to support this motion.
Mr. Moon, would you like to speak to your second?
Ms. Evans has just given a very comprehensive explanation in support of the main motion, that I am very happy to be supporting this motion that includes a placeholder for $4 million for FCPS ON and also finally authorizing, Superintendent, to use $267,741 from flexible reserve so that we can start implementing the important decisions. reserve so that we can start implementing the important decisions the board has made with the Justice High School.
Thank you. I'll call on Ms. Hines for an amendment.
Thank you. I move to amend the main motion by allocating one-time funding of $0.25 million to the Office of the Chief Academic and Equity Officer to support equity-related work and to reduce the placeholder for FCPS ON by $0.25 million.
Seconded by Ms. Palchek. Ms. Hines, would you like to speak to your motion?
Okay, thank you very much. So just for a little background, when we heard the mid-year budget review presentation last week, it was clear that staff was realizing roughly $250,000 in savings because we had set that aside to hire an equity assistant superintendent for equity and innovation, I think is what we were calling it. And so the new superintendent decided to, Dr. Braybrand decided to actually give that equity oversight responsibility to our current, our chief academic officer, Dr. Duran. So Dr. Duran's title now is Chief Academic and Equity Officer. And so I think that was where we found the found savings. I actually think that giving that responsibility to Dr. Duran, to our chief academic officer, is a good idea because I think we know that equity and closing gaps, that's work we do every day, all day, in every place, and it's all about academics, it's all about instruction. So, and to have equity as the vision and the mission of someone in that position in the school system is appropriate. But the reality is, Dr. Duran already has a full-time job as chief academic officer and plenty to do there. So, you know, some of us raised the concern last week about the mid-year budget review that maybe we should hang on to that $250,000 rather than just realize it as savings and put it in other projects and hold on to it as support for that office, for the Office of Equity, as Dr. Duran gets started, you know, building a plan for oversight of all the work that's going on in the system when it comes to equity. And so that's the only point of this amendment, is to take that $250,000 out of the FCPS ON placeholder, which is something over $4 million, so it seems like a relatively small take from that placeholder, to make sure that Dr. Duran and his staff have the support and the resources that they need to do the work. Our strategic plan, as we know, shows that closing gaps and improving equity is a top priority for this school board and for the school system, and I think we owe it to the students and to the community to provide oversight of a plan, resources to support it, and outcomes that we can measure. And I think this is just part of making sure the community knows we continue to support, we want to support and keep an eye on that work, and that we have high hopes for it. So I hope my colleagues can support it. If there are any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Ms. Palchek, would you like to speak to your second?
Yes, just to add briefly, I know many of us are passionate, and I appreciate board members who have been very involved, including Ms. Corbett Sanders and Ms. Hines. Just in addition to that, you know, I think we have been waiting for quite some time to find the right way to do this. And it's very clear across the country that there's no silver bullet, and I don't think we've found one person with all the answers yet. But I do want to commend and thank Dr. Braybrand and Dr. Duran. I do agree with Ms. Hines that it's the right decision. Dr. Duran is in the right position to do this as the academic officer and also has the passion and the knowledge to help move this work forward. I agree with Ms. Hines that we just want to ensure that with so much on his plate and now new things being added on, that there is still the ability for all of that to move forward. And I do want to thank Dr. Braybrand. I know we are looking for ways to find savings, and I know that it may not be in the future. We may be able to say, you know what, we can do the same work by just by shifting budget and finding areas of savings long-term and shifting it to the office. And I do appreciate that, and you're looking into that. In the short term, I do think that we need to ensure that the work happens, and that it happens soon. We are already many years behind, and I know that Dr. Braybrand is very passionate about ensuring that it's done properly, not necessarily looking outside, but looking what we do well internally. I know that you helped to close many achievement gaps, or at least one, when you were a principal at Fairfax High School. So I just, I know that you and Dr. Duran will ensure this happens. In the meantime, we trust that this will help the work, and also will be supporting Ms. McLaughlin, just to ensure that we know how it will be implemented. And just thank you for your time, and please, please understand that this is supporting what you're doing, and thank you for listening and for your understanding on this.
Ms. Darnatt Kofax?
Yes, I have a question to the maker of the motion and staff as well. I was not at the Monday work session. I am, of course, supportive. I have talked to Ms. Hines about, you know, we've talked about the equity issues that exist across the county and how they affect different regions differently. But this particular one, and Ms. Hines, I'm sorry we didn't connect, but I do have a very big question. If we're taking out of FCPS ON, which was supposed to be an initiative to reduce the opportunity gaps for those kids that don't have this, I don't understand why that pot of money was chosen. And I'll ask you that first, and then I will ask Dr. Braybrand, is there other places we can take those funds from?
Okay, well, thank you for the question. You know, when I looked at the mid-year budget review, I looked at all the numbers there. We were shifting, you know, realizing savings and then trying to find places to put the savings. And I, most of the other items in the mid-year budget review were rather small, but that one item is very large, and it occurred to me that this, shifting this amount of money out of there would more likely be something that we could make up somehow in the future, maybe at the quarter or year-end budget review as well. So that was, that was just my thinking, that it was small enough in a large enough pot that we might be able to make it up. Certainly, I am not intentionally trading the work of FCPS ON and how it will reduce inequities for families and kids for this change, because I think actually that is probably some of the work of the Equity Office, is making sure that we close that digital divide. So I am not consciously making that trade-off here.
Dr. Braybrand?
I would just share from a staff perspective, one of the things I'd shared with the board earlier, we'd had our work session on FCPS ON and then conferring with our own staff afterwards, that while we're grabbing in the mid-year now dollars for FCPS ON, the full implementation of that plan, won't begin in 1819, but 1920. So there's another year to continue to capture dollars and savings for FCPS ON. It's not going to be the immediate year coming up, it's the year after. So I felt with that amendment, that that amount of money, and given there was an extra year, that I still had the flexibility to figure out with our staff how we would fully implement that piece.
Thank you. Ms. Corbett Sanders?
Yes, and thank you, Ms. Hines, for this important budget amendment. As you know, the issues surrounding equity have been a great concern for all the members of this board for a very long time. It's in, excuse me, it is a concern that has been realized in the joint work of the Board of Supervisors and the school board in the form of the One Fairfax Resolution, which was formed by the Skipped Committee under the guidance of both Mrs. Darnatt Kofax and Ms. McLaughlin, and I know, Ms. Hines, you were involved in that earlier on as well. And in the remarks offered by many at this table last Thursday, including those that Ms. Palchek reiterated tonight, setting aside the $250,000 to be used with intentionality for equity is especially important in light of the One Fairfax. We have to put our money and our efforts where our mouth is. I'm optimistic that in this amendment, along with the follow-on amendment that Mrs. McLaughlin will be offering, that equity will receive the full commitment of this board. Dr. Braybrand, I would ask you and Dr. Duran that as you approach the development of an equity plan, that you look at not only the challenges we face in addressing achievement gaps, but also look at how we ensure that what we do can, what we can do to narrow opportunity gaps. And as you know, we continue to face a challenge of having schools that have a full range of opportunities for our students. That includes both opportunities in classroom and enrichment programs available as after-school programs and more. In other schools, there is a dearth of these opportunities. And the absence of these opportunities creates a disparity in learning experience and growth for all of our students. So I encourage you to, all of my colleagues, to support this amendment and the follow-on amendment, and we really look forward to the plan that both you and Dr. Duran will put forth in the early months of the next year.
Keys Kamara?
Yes, I will be supporting this amendment. I think it's extremely important to have a laser focus on these equity issues. I'm particularly concerned about the achievement gaps, and I know that we have efforts already in place working on these things. And so for that reason, I know that Ms. McLaughlin has an amendment, but I'm supporting this with the understanding that we'll get a clear description of how we plan to do this, how we plan to use these funds, and specifically how these efforts will be different than the efforts that are already in place. And so I want the public to know that while we are authorizing this, I think that we are all well aware that this is money that's hard to come by, and we very much want to make sure, and we'll be reviewing how this money is used and to make sure that, in a review with Dr. Duran, exactly how he thinks we can best attack this issue, these issues with laser focus. Thank you.
Ms. McLaughlin?
Just briefly, I want to thank Ms. Hines for quickly putting forward this amendment together. As someone who was the liaison to the Minority Student Achievement Oversight Committee for the past two years, I spent the last two years during our budget process asking that we would finally get some staffing to address issues on equity and closing achievement gaps. When I first brought it together, Dr. Garza at the time said she was creating an assistant superintendent for strategic initiative or strategic innovation, and she'd go ahead and add equity to it. That wasn't exactly what I envisioned, nor I think the MSAOC, but it was a start. And then there was question about how we could staff it and, you know, really get some more intentionality to the work. But then, as people are aware, Dr. Garza departed, and we put the hiring of this new position on hold until we could get our new superintendent. And when Dr. Braybrand arrived, he looked at the talents of our team, including Dr. Duran, who has been with multiple school districts and has a wealth of experience for dealing with equity, and determined that Dr. Duran could take this on as part of his work as the chief academic officer. And so essentially, Ms. Hines's motion allows us to take advantage of the fact that Dr. Braybrand looked at his talent, we've got someone at the very highest level who reports to him directly, but then how do we take some of the really great work we're doing on the ground, like Project Momentum and work by Rich Polio, I believe he's calling "closing the gaps," but bringing it to an actual sort of intentional identifiable working group? And I mentioned last Thursday that Montgomery County Public Schools has an Office of Equity, I believe it's called Equity Initiatives Unit, and they have been a model that MSAOC has really asked our board and the school system to look at and say, how can we be more direct in our work? And so, Ms. Hines, I think that your amendment really enables this board to demonstrate our commitment to One Fairfax, demonstrates our commitment to equity. And then, as people have referenced, the follow-on motion that I've proposed, but certainly Ms. Hines and many of us talked about, was important, that the board certainly welcomes Dr. Braybrand and Dr. Duran when they have developed what this plan will look like, not just this funding, but perhaps additional funding. But it will enable the board and the public to then provide additional input and have clarity. So thank you again, Ms. Hines, and I'm very excited to support it.
Mr. McElveen?
Thank you. So when Dr. Braybrand first proposed combining these two positions, I told him you'd have to get through Pat Hines first, and so it's not surprising to me that this amendment is coming from her tonight. But, you know, I, like Ms. Darnatt Kofax and other colleagues, do have concern pulling this from the FCPS ON initiative, but I do remain hopeful that we'll be able to restore that funding in coming budget cycles. So I will support this.
Okay, thank you. I will support it as well. We have, I know that we will be working to be able to afford Fairfax ON, because that is also, we have to close the digital divide, and I think we will push through to get to that spot. And I know that Dr. Duran and Dr. Braybrand will be coming to us with a plan, because I know that you've been working on it. So this gives at least a placeholder to make sure that you're able to do all the things that you plan to do. So...oh, we have some go-bags, thank you. Ms. Darnatt Kofax, and then, okay, Ms. McLaughlin, did you have a go-back? Oh, thank you. All right, then I will call for the vote. And the amendment is to amend the main motion by allocating one-time funding of $250,000 to the Office of the Chief Academic and Equity Officer to support equity-related work and to reduce the placeholder for FCPS ON by .25 million or $250,000. All right, all those in favor? All right, that motion is unanimous with Ms. Schultz and Mr. Wilson away from the table. Thank you. Now I call on Ms. McLaughlin? No, we need to vote on the main motion and then call on Ms. McLaughlin for a follow-on motion. All right, so we are back to the main motion on the budget as amended. Yes, Ms. McLaughlin?
Oh, we didn't speak to the main motion, so can those of us who wanted to?
Yes, you certainly may speak to the main motion.
Just briefly, again, because I have had extensive conversations in the community, and this is something I want to speak to. As Ms. Evans read in part of this mid-year budget, there is a reference to how we will address costs associated with the name Justice High School. And as I shared with my colleagues at the work session, I said on numerous occasions, when the board was deliberating on what to do, that regardless of what the outcome would be when we rename this high school, it is on this school system and this board to cover the cost, and that the cost of this change was never something to be an excuse, to change or not change. If it's the right thing to do, then we change it, and we absolutely want to do our due diligence, and I want to thank George Waters. You have been very tireless in your efforts to try and help Ms. Evans and help this board understand that to look very carefully at the numbers. And it is important because it has been part of the, I think, harmful narrative out there that I've certainly heard in Braddock District where people have said, how would you vote for something that's going to cost a million dollars? And what I always tried to push back and say is, it's not going to cost a million dollars, not even remotely going to cost it, but that's never going to be the driving force. It's just how do we arrive at the best solution and what to do here? And so while I supported Colonel Louis G. Mendez, I did believe in my heart that was going to be the way forward, I do support the fact that this board made the decision. Justice High School does honor three individuals, and while it wasn't the name that I would have picked, and I did not feel I could support that name, I do absolutely support helping this high school community and the overall now justice community to heal. And that's something I've said from day one. And so how do we heal? We fund this thing as quickly as possible. I have hesitated to use this analogy, but I have really struggled on what to even call this very special high school, because once we decided to name it Justice, it feels as if we're going to be referencing a school by one name that no longer is there. And so I think even for us as board members, the sooner we can put the name Justice in and get the name changed, I think that helps the community instead of this schizophrenic, are we still talking about Stuart High School right now, or are we talking about Justice High School right now? I think the young lady who spoke tonight as well did a beautiful job. And so I did want this on the record, that I am working very closely with my colleague, Ms. Sandy Evans, who has been... Ms. Sandy Evans, who has been my friend and fellow advocate for a decade. I respect Sandy's leadership. I respect the fact that Sandy worked harder than anyone could possibly ask on a very difficult issue. And while she and I saw different solutions to it, we are very united on how we help this amazing high school, and that is by getting the finances in place and getting it done. So I'm happy to support this main motion before us.
Okay, we are now back to the main motion as amended, and it was amended by adding the $250,000 to the Office of Chief Academic and Equity Officer Support Equity-Related Work. Otherwise, the rest of the motion stands. So all those in favor of the main motion as amended? All those in favor? It is unanimous with Ms. Schultz and Mr. Wilson away from the table. Thank you all very much. And thank you very much to our budget staff and Ms. Michael and everybody else who has worked very hard on this. We appreciate it. And now I'll call on Ms. McLaughlin for a follow-on motion.
Thank you. I move that the board direct the superintendent to update the board at a future work session on how the .25 million dollars in new funding will be used to improve equity within FCPS.
Seconded by Ms. Corbett Sanders. Okay, Ms. McLaughlin, would you like to speak to your motion?
Briefly, because I know we are running late. As my colleagues are aware, I again supported, put forth this motion, because I think it was really important to ensure that the public, as well as the board, has a chance to dialogue with the superintendent on the plan that he will develop with this funding and any additional funding he will need. And that our ability to communicate to the public that it's important, that we will want them to be part of this conversation as we move forward in a very positive way of putting funds toward the important equity work that this school system needs to be committed to. I was very pleased that our chairman of the Minority Student Achievement Oversight Committee, Judy Howard, communicated to the board this morning the support from the committee for this motion. And I won't be hurt if none of my colleagues want to speak, other than to put their hand up and vote support for it.
Ms. Corbett Sanders, would you like to speak to your second?
Yes, just briefly. I think that this is the complementary motion to the one that we just adopted of Mrs. Hines. And it really, we've spoken at the work session on Monday, when Dr. Braybrand said that he thought that meeting a February-March timeframe would not be a challenge in presenting the work of Dr. Duran, so I'm happy to support this.
Ms. Evans?
Yes, thank you. I just wanted to say how strongly I support this follow-on motion and thank Ms. McLaughlin for bringing it to the board. I didn't speak before in Ms. Hines's motion, I also strongly supported that and appreciate her work as well. I think these two companion pieces will be very important moving forward. This is a value of the board, as Ms. Corbett Sanders had mentioned before, it's in keeping with the One Fairfax resolution. So I just want to commend both Ms. McLaughlin and Ms. Hines for their work moving this forward. Thank you.
Ms. Hines?
Yeah, thank you. I'll be quick, too. When I was, I think it was Ms. Kees Kamara, I was talking to you over the weekend about my amendment, and you pointed out to me then, just as you did tonight, how important it is for us to, you know, we're spending a lot of money trying to close gaps, but we, some of the things we're doing are just not moving the needle, and we know that, and it's very frustrating. So this is our opportunity to kind of turn a corner, do things differently, direct it in a different way. And so I heard Dr. Braybrand respond to that concern by saying we would get a report, you know, by February. And so I wasn't sure we needed this follow-on at first, but I think that doing it, and I hope, Dr. Braybrand, you see it this way, is just for the public to know that this is a strong partnership between the board and you, and that we want to kind of, we want to work closely with you on this as much as possible. So I'm looking forward to hearing from you. Does that, did you want to say anything?
Just absolutely. We're very excited. It's December now, but by the end of February, we will be ready to go, and we think we're going to have some exciting developments to share with you. So, thank you.
And thank you, Dr. Braybrand. Right, we were all aware that the plan is in the works and that it will be coming to us. It's not ready tonight, and so we look forward to getting that by February. Okay, so I will call for the motion, which is to ask the superintendent to update the board at a future work session on how the new funding will be used to improve equity within Fairfax County Public Schools. All those in favor? Motion is unanimous with Mr. Wilson, Ms. Schultz away from the table. Okay, moving on. The next item on the agenda is a consent agenda. Our adopted Rules of Parliamentary Procedure, Robert's Rules, provide for a consent agenda listing several items for approval of the board by a single motion. Many items listed have gone through board review and documentation has been provided to all board members and the public in advance. Items may be removed from the consent agenda at the request of any board members prior to the meeting. See no request. Item 6.01, approve the minutes of the December 7 regular school board meeting. 6.02, that the school board approve the granting of a perpetual street easement to VDOT for the above-described property at George C. Marshall High School, subject to VDOT's approval of roadway improvements to be performed by others and authorize the division superintendent or the assistant superintendent, Department of Facilities and Transportation Services, either of whom may act without the other, to take all actions necessary and appropriate in consultation with legal counsel. For the school division to negotiate, execute, deliver, and administer the deed of easement and any other related documents on behalf of the school board. 6.03, confirm the separations for the period beginning November 1, 2017, and ending November 30, 2017. 6.04, award the primary contract for the carpet and floor tile installation and replacement contract to Carpet Experts, Inc., and the secondary contract to Mida, Inc. DBA, Abbey Commercial Flooring, and authorize the division superintendent or the assistant superintendent of Facilities and Transportation Service to execute and administer both of the above contracts on behalf of the school board. Is there any objection to approving the consent agenda? Hearing and seeing no objection, the consent agenda is approved. The next, new business, is the Lanier AAP Center. And I see that Toby Sorenson has arrived, now that we are so late into the agenda. Everybody is here from the city of Fairfax. So I guess I first, I'll ask, there he is. Dr. Presidio has the first presentation. Thank you, Dr. Presidio.
All right, well, good evening, Madam Chair, members of the board. I know it's very late, but I definitely appreciate you making time on the agenda for us to address this item, which is very important, and proposes to open a new middle school center at Lanier Middle School for our Level 4 Advanced Academic Students. And I would also, just again, like to thank our distinguished guests from Fairfax City School Board and Dr. Pejardo Superintendent from Fairfax City Public Schools being here with us tonight and staying this late to hear this agenda item. So I want to definitely share my appreciation with them. We've been working very closely with the Fairfax City School Board since 2016 to work on a model whereby we could serve advanced academic Level 4 students, city students, within the Fairfax High School pyramid. And the proposal that we're recommending for Lanier does just that. It brings back 200 students that are Fairfax Pyramid students to receive their middle school services at Lanier Middle School. So we're working very closely with the city. They've been very supportive of this initiative, both financially and in spirit, and we really thank them for all the work that they've been able to help us do. So I did just want to give a little bit of background information on this agenda item, because it's been a little while since we've opened a new center in Fairfax. And I think the board will remember that we've established readiness criteria that a school has to meet before staff will bring forward any recommendations to open a new center. And I'm happy to report that under Principal Leonard's leadership and with support from the Fairfax City School Board, that Lanier has more than met that readiness criteria. The first issue that we look at is critical mass. And as I said, we have 200 students that are eligible to receive Level 4 services at the Lanier Middle School Center. Those students are currently receiving services at Rocky Run. Bringing them back into Lanier would bring them back into their pyramid. The next thing that we look at is the physical capacity of the school. Lanier, right now, has over 300 available seat spaces. So actually, bringing these students back into Lanier helps us maximize the physical space. Very importantly, we look at the staff readiness and the staff training. And this is where we've received financial assistance from the city that's been able to allow us to really expedite the training for the faculty at Lanier. They've got five teachers that are already certified with their AAP endorsement and more that are working on it. So I really credit them and their leadership team for that investment. And then we also look at those extracurricular activities. And there are many of those that have already been put in place, things like Odyssey of the Mind, Math Counts, Science Olympiad. So they have a full range of complementary extracurricular activities that are going to support students in being successful in the center as well. So I also finally just really wanted to mention the community engagement process, because that's a very important piece before we open centers. So we have mailed notification to all the families within the Lanier Middle School boundary. We've conducted community meetings, and we've sent a survey to all of the families within the Lanier Middle School boundary. Of those families that completed the survey, a slight majority, 53%, prefer option one. And this is the part that I think is really important to clarify. Option one would have us formally recognize the center at Lanier in school year 1819, but it would not require any students to attend the center in 1819. The following year, in 1920, seventh grade, rising seventh-grade students would be required to attend. And the following year, in 2021, then, rising seventh and rising eighth-grade students would be required to attend the Lanier Middle School Center. So that is the recommendation of the staff, based on that community input and survey. And I'm happy to address any questions that the board might have, but again, I certainly appreciate that it's late in the evening.
Thank you. I see some lights on, but I'm not sure if colleagues mean for them to be up. Okay, so I do see, for those wishing to speak, I see Ms. Palczak, Corbett Sanders, Moon, and Hines. No, okay. So then, Ms. Palczak first.
Sure, I will go first. I just want to take a brief moment, I know it's late, but to thank our staff and the city staff, superintendents, the school board. This has been such, I think, powerful partnership. I know it was one of the first meetings I had as a new elected official, and with Dr. Pejardo's predecessor, Dr. Noonan, as well as with the principals. And I know Principal Leonard has been ready and open. It's especially important to me, my brothers were actually both graduates of Lanier Middle School. Back in the day, it was a different special program. They were at ESL when Frost did not offer it. So I think it's just so important, as we're looking at the equity lens, that we've expanded other programs and that we bring this opportunity to the students at Lanier. We have fabulous teachers and staff, who I also appreciate are well-trained and will be trained by the time we get there. I know some of the concerns we've had in the past for some programs, we've realized it's making sure that we take the time to do it properly. I also know that you've worked hard to ensure that at the elementary school level, there is equity there between the schools. You have local Level 4 programs now that will help prepare students, and they have access in the city to great STEM labs and other opportunities. So I think we've come, it's been a long road, and I know that the city board is eager to move this forward, and I know we've been working together. But I think it's been thoughtful, intentional, and certainly well-thought-out and planned. So I appreciate all of the community engagement, the work you've done with staff. I know we have the region and Noel also, who did so much behind the scenes to ensure that this is successful, not just a program, but a successful one. So I just wanted to thank you and thank our partners in the city, on the board, and staff in the city as well for doing this. And I think we have the right leaders in these schools to ensure that they are successful programs. So I look forward to seeing this and hearing more about how the community engagement and how it is going forward. I know several of us have students that will be affected by this. And I also do appreciate that we are listening to the community when we look at rolling out the programs. I know it's not easy for us to do this kind of rolling out, but it does help our families to be able to transition. So just want to thank you again, and I will let my colleagues continue and wish you all here a very happy holiday.
Ms. Corbett Sanders, and then Mr. Moon and Ms. Hines?
Sorry, I was pushing wrong, but I'll be very brief. I want to thank you all for all the hard work and the very careful manner in which you've done this, by rolling out the professional development first, creating the groundswell at the school. And certainly now, you have the critical mass, and those are all the things that will make a very successful center. I think that your approach is very similar to the approach that Cooper has taken, and we have seen that to be a winning model. And so, once again, thank you and congratulations on a job well-done, and we look forward to approving this next month.
Mr. Moon?
Thank you for the presentation, and thank you for the advocacy by Fairfax City, both members and superintendent. I remember having conversation with the former superintendent of the city, Dr. Peter Noonan, on this one, that my first question has to do with a timeline for decision-making, because I don't think I have that information. Am I missing something?
So this will come before the board as an action item on January 11th?
It's at the next meeting.
That's correct.
So there is a no-intervening work session, and this is it?
That's correct.
Okay, then I'm going to have to ask you a few more questions.
Sure.
Since this is the last opportunity. With option number one, that is, the steps recommendation is to designate us Lanier Middle School to Center from upcoming, I mean, coming September, coming September, but doesn't require any seventh or eighth graders to attend. So if any seventh or eighth grader decide to attend as an AAP Center, and if number happens to be, I don't know what the number is going to be, small, would you be able to provide as a excellent program that is, that we see throughout FCPS?
Yeah, absolutely. We actually anticipate that a large number of students will choose to start in the formerly recognized center in the fall. In fact, I was just looking, we have 59 students currently this school year that are choosing to stay to receive their services at Lanier instead of accessing Rocky Run. So that's 33 students that are current seventh graders, that obviously, we're assuming will continue in eighth grade next year to receive services at Lanier, and then 26 existing eighth graders. So we would anticipate that that number would go up if the board chooses to formally recognize Lanier as a center for 1819.
In your mind, I know that you have 200 total for seventh and eighth?
200 additional.
Oh, this is 200 additional?
Yeah.
Okay. All right, what is the minimum number of students you think you need to have for each grade to have a robust program that we want to have?
Right. So typically, what we've said, and some of the board members will remember when we worked with George Mason University to do a study to look at some of our readiness factors, and they helped us really establish those criteria. They suggested that we really would like to have a critical mass of two classes per grade level, so that you could have two teachers that can really collaborate.
So about 50 students.
So about 50 students.
50 students, you know, that, we already have that, is that?
That's right.
So as you ask, as we ask, a rising seventh and eighth, eligible seventh and eighth graders to make decisions, that will the students be able to, let's say, change their minds after, you know, making their decisions, but before the start of the year? That number, they think it's not large enough, or somehow, or, you know, there aren't enough students going to, you know, Lanier from their feeder schools?
Well, the Lanier staff is prepared to provide Level 4 services to those students that choose to stay at Lanier next year. So they're prepared to do that, they're doing that now. I think the issue is just... I think the issue is just if the board were to choose to accelerate and require students to attend as rising seventh graders next year, there were a number of families, the majority of families, that said that they did not want the board to move that quickly. So really what this recommendation does is it really preserves choice for families for rising seventh graders for next year.
Okay. That's good enough for me.
Okay. I'm happy to follow up, obviously, with any questions that board members have prior to January 11th as well individually, so.
Ms. Hines?
Yeah, just a couple of questions. So since next year will be optional, will we be providing transportation, bus transportation? I mean, parents don't have to drive their kids to the school if they opt to go to Lanier, right?
That is a good question. I think we still need, yeah.
Oh, because it's their base school, so they get a bus anyway, got it. Okay. So my other questions are just about the Rocky Run. And Rocky Run and Lanier sort of together, how does this change the populations of each? And that's in terms of numbers, and you've given us the ballpark of the numbers. If they're already keeping 50 or so kids this year, seventh graders, 59 seventh graders, at Lanier who are not going to Rocky Run, and so that's not a, so that doesn't sound like it's a big number change if, you know, all of 100 or whatever it is in seventh grade next year stay at Lanier. But I'm guessing. So what would that do to Rocky Run, I guess is what I'm saying, once all the kids are staying at Lanier?
So we have provided that information, and it's posted on Board Docs. But just to speak to that briefly, so Rocky Run, when you look at the information that's posted to Board Docs, you're going to see that there's some capacity that is showing at Rocky Run. But that is actually, you have to read the footnote, that capacity is actually based on the renovation that's going to happen at Rocky Run. So right now, Rocky Run is severely overcrowded. And I think you heard earlier in Mr. Plattenberg's presentation with the capital improvement plan, that we know that we've got a lot of housing units that are coming into that Dulles corridor area where we're going to need additional seat space. So staff is working on some additional plans to relieve overcrowding and to really maximize the seat space across not just Lanier and Rocky Run, but some of our other middle schools in that region as well.
Okay, thank you. And just the other question, and if it's in there somewhere, I apologize, I'll find it. Demographically, does this change the demographic mix of either school in any significant way that you know of?
I mean, we could provide that information for you. I didn't provide it here, but we definitely could do that.
Thank you. I think I'd appreciate that, just the before and after with our subgroups and our socioeconomic groups, special ed, free reduced meals, that.
We'd be happy to do that. One thing that is provided in the information that's posted tonight is you'll see that there's actually a larger number of AAP students at Rocky Run than non- AAP students currently because of the center and the size of the center there now. So that's one thing that would adjust with taking 200 students out. But we can get you additional subgroup information as well.
Thank you.
Ms. McLaughlin?
Yes, briefly, I know we'll have a chance to talk more about this, but as someone who had a child who attended a center, my youngest son, I really am encouraged by this opportunity. We were reluctant to have to leave our neighborhood school and send him at the, at the elementary level, and then he was fortunate that the middle school center was also, you know, our base. So for the Fairfax High School Pyramid, the Lanier Middle School community, I hope and welcome the city of Fairfax and, you know, Superintendent Pejardo communicating with us as well on this. But I really see this as being a positive, and also I know Rocky Run is, you know, always dealing with capacity issues too, so hopefully this will be viewed as a win-win for the community and for the delivery of important services.
Thank you.
Mr. Moon has a go back.
One quick go back, since we don't have another work session. I was looking at the map last night, boundary map for Rocky Run Middle School AAP Center. Covers huge area. Am I wrong on that?
No, that's correct.
So do we have any plan so that students don't have to travel that far distance or any other, any other middle school they can accommodate?
Well, we are talking about some additional opportunities with some additional middle schools in that region of the county. But right now, in the short term, all we're really talking about is the opening of Lanier Middle School Center. We're not talking about opening any other middle school centers over the next several years.
I don't know whether I want to wait for next several years, just looking at the map, just.
We'd be happy to entertain that with the board.
It's a bad for me.
It's a large center, yeah.
Okay, I don't think I see any further speakers. I am very pleased to support this. I will have a granddaughter at Lanier in 1920, and I know this will keep kids back in their own pyramid, and that, that is always a plus. So I will let her know, she will be delighted, so that all of her friends will be coming with her. So thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Perisio, and thank you Fairfax City people. And I will actually read the agenda item because it is on new business for tonight. And it is 7.01, that in order to contribute to the efficiency of the school division, the school board approved the establishment of a new Level Four Advanced Academic Center Program in the fall of 2018 at Lanier Middle School, and also adopt the following people assignment plan. In the fall of 2018, Lanier-based rising seventh and eighth grade center-eligible students currently assigned to Rocky Run Middle School would be afforded the option to attend the new Lanier Middle School Level Four Center or their current Level Four Center at Rocky Run Middle School. In the fall of 2019, Lanier-based rising seventh grade students currently assigned to Rocky Run will be required to attend Lanier's Level Four Center. Rising eighth grade students in the fall of 2019 would be afforded the option to attend Lanier Level Four Center or their current Level Four Center at Rocky Run Middle School. In the fall of 2020, Lanier-based rising seventh and eighth grade center-eligible students will be required to attend the Lanier Level Four Center. Thank you very much. And this, in fact, was the phase in that was used at Cooper Middle School, and it was quite satisfactory for Cooper. So I assume it will be just fine for Lanier, and thank you all very much for coming tonight. The last item on, for new business is 7.02, approve the FY 2019-2023 Capital Improvement Program. And again, that will be approved at a meeting in January. Superintendent Matters, Dr. Braybrand.
Thank you Chairman Strauss. I conducted my community conversations this week in Region Two, right here at Luther Jackson. All five of the conversations in each region have gone very well. We had more than 500 community members and staff attend, and I've really had a great time doing them. We're going to do one more after the break, either late winter or early spring. I'll publicize that date in the new year. But a great chance to meet folks, and even those that didn't have a chance to get their questions answered during the Q and A, I stayed after, and actually for Luther Jackson, probably stayed after another hour, meeting with folks one-on-one. So a great time to meet people and find out what's going on. You know, it's the end of the year in calendar marks times, times for beginnings, but also times for ends. And I, I need to share with you tonight that a long-serving staff member in the superintendent's office is retiring at the end of this month. Anyone who has ever called or interacted in the superintendent's office for the last 18 years has known and encountered Sue Kirkbride. She typically watches these board meetings. Now it's about 11 o'clock. I don't know if she's still watching, but it still has to be said. She has been in the superintendent's office since Bud Spillane. She's been through, and I don't want you to think she's leaving now just because I came. She said she almost was ready to leave but wanted to stay, and I have thoroughly enjoyed having her the last few months and working with her. She's always cheerful, she always helps folks. She's been a font of knowledge for everything in Fairfax County Public Schools. I do hope for those of you here on the board, and even those of you who've listened, who've known her, will give her a call or stop by over the next week or so. I know though, that I have, I'm, I'm at peace because she's going to get to retire and spend more time with her husband and her children and her two grandchildren. She is a consummate professional, and Fairfax is going to miss her deeply. I just want to thank Sue Kirkbride. And one last thing, so I'd like to thank all my colleagues on the leadership team that are still here this evening, and the school board for your partnership in working with me in the family that's Fairfax County Public Schools. This is the kind, the time of year to contemplate the many gifts we have. Gifts have been handed out to me tonight. I'll do better next year in knowing that that's what happens. But I want to wish all of you a wonderful holiday season. I am blessed to be here. I am blessed to be back in the Fairfax County family, and I hope all of you have a wonderful winter break with your loved ones and family. So thank you very much.
Thank you, Dr. Braybrand. Next on the agenda, our board reports, and I will call on Ms. Darna Kofex for report on governance, and then Ms. Hines for report on audit.
Thank you, Madam Chair. The Governance Committee met yesterday, and we were able to discuss three topics. We discussed school board policy 8335, which is the wireless communication facilities topic. I thank Mr. Plattenberg and his staff for working with us, as well as members of the community, to go over this communications policy to date. I think we will be ready to bring something to the full board after the January meeting. We also discussed the potential for a retreat, and we will also be talking to you further about that. The discussion for the February 23rd and 24th retreat, we will be discussing that with the full board in January as well. Thank you so much.
Okay, Ms. Hines for audit, and then Ms. Schultz for CPDC.
Ms. Hines? Thank you. Audit committee met just yesterday. We had an update from the Auditor General on staff changes in the office, current audit projects, the status of current projects, and also the status of follow-up on recommendations to staff from previous audits. All of that is posted for anyone who's interested. I want to thank the folks in the Office of the Auditor General and all the members of the Audit Committee, including our two citizen members who really make a difference in their service on that committee.
Ms. Schultz for CPDC.
Yes, CPDC, the Comprehensive Planning Development Committee, had a reconstituted meeting last Friday for the first time in a long time. We discussed with our colleagues from the Fairfax City Board, from facilities, and several other LT members, where we are on facilities, where we are on the CIP, how we could potentially restructure what we're doing on CPDC to more collaboratively and strategically discuss things with the Board of Supervisors as it relates to capital funding and bonds. And we have some notes that we're going to prepare and possibly look to have a part of a work session in January, a small presentation for some recommendations from CPDC to the full board.
Thank you. Board Matters, I'll begin with Ms. Case Mara.
I just want to say goodnight.
There you go.
You can even sing if you'd like. Ms. Darna Kofex.
Merry Christmas, everybody, sorry.
See, I was singing. She told me I had to sing.
Happy holidays, everyone.
Ms. Schultz?
I do have to say a couple of things. First of all, I wasn't at our, at our last board meeting, so I didn't get to thank my community for coming out for town halls, and Dr. Braybrand's listening tour up in Chantilly, really substantive, thanking my, my executive assistant from the school board office who came. She said that it was probably one of the best she'd ever seen. And as well, the students and the leadership group at Robinson High School for our student town hall continues to be one of the very best things that I do. I look forward to the rest of the series of student town halls being scheduled in the rest of my, rest of my high schools. I want to thank the High School Principal Association for inviting us for a social opportunity, not purely social, because some of the best work happens away from a board table. We don't golf, so we're not doing it on a golf course, but really with Matt Eline at the head of the High School Principals Association, an opportunity to be collaborative just away from the work table. So I appreciate their work to work with us. And I also want to just highlight, there was a series, a 16-day series that USAID did on gender-based violence and how to protect children around the world, and since a lot of those children wind up in Fairfax County schools. I went to several of the presentations down at State Department and across Washington, DC, and talking about engaging men and boys in the conversation, and since I'm a mother of four of them, how you start to begin to change the conversation about what's happening with, with violence against women and girls. And, you know, that's a kind of a bit of a hot topic in this country these days. And I really appreciated people being flown in from, you know, northern Iraq and talking about, you know, Yazidi girls, you know, being sexually enslaved by the thousands, and boys playing on school playgrounds, you know, and their play is beheading, you know, and really learning how we start to begin to reach, you know, really young children who've been affected by violence. And as we head into sort of a peaceful season, you know, remembering that not everybody has it as good as we do, and, and understanding what, you know, what young children are facing, not only around the world, but who wind up, you know, in our schools and in our communities, was a really powerful thing. So I really appreciate them doing that, including the invitation to attend that. And with that, Merry Christmas, Happy Hanukkah, and everybody have a restful, peaceful break, and no homework.
Ms. Hines? Happy holidays, everybody. Thank you. Thank you to my colleagues and staff. Merry Christmas, Happy Hanukkah, Happy Holidays, Happy New Year. We will see everybody in the new year. Thank you. Ms. Corbett Sanders?
Mr. Moon.
Oh, Mr. Moon, you're back.
I'm okay.
You're okay.
I'm sure that somebody talked about Westfield, everybody, right? Congratulating Westfield.
No, you can congratulate.
Oh, yeah, three state champions, third one in a row against the same team, Oscar Smith, but this time they did not need to go to overtime. 28 to 21, come from behind the victory. Woo!
Great, you got here just in time. Ms. Corbett Sanders?
Well done, Mr. Moon. I just want to do a couple of thank yous to Woodlawn Elementary and Washington Mill Elementary's principals for hosting me this week, as well as the South County Federation. And I would like to give a special shout-out, I know Dr. Ramey's already left, but his team supported the job fair in Gum Springs this past weekend, and it was a fantastic success. So thank you very much for that. And last but not least, tomorrow, on Saturday at Mount Vernon High School, there's going to be a holiday market. It was moved from last Saturday to this Saturday. It'll be there from 10 to 3:00. And I wish everybody a very Happy Hanukkah, Merry Christmas, Happy New Year, and the best of all things for everybody in the new year.
Happy holidays.
Happy third night of Hanukkah, Merry Christmas, Happy Holidays, and as I told my students, your only homework is to rest, relax, and enjoy your time with your family.
Ms. McLaughlin?
Just really quickly, we've talked about how important this two-week break is to our families and our employees, and so, you know, Dr. Braybrand, for you and the last of the Mohicans here, we've got, it looks like Mr. Foster and our illustrious Deputy Superintendent, who has one of the longest commutes in the building. Please convey to the leadership team that we do hope that you all too will get a chance to enjoy the, the winter break. There's no doubt that all of us here work extremely hard because we love and care about the kids and our employees and the school system. And so I'm, I'm hopeful that every single one of us here tonight will find ways to one of us here tonight will find ways to truly carve out time for peace and joy and rest. Happy holidays, everybody.
Ms. Evans?
Happy third night of Hanukkah, Merry Christmas, Happy New Year, and to all of our students and staff, and to all of the families that support us every day, and just so everyone knows, I have been authorized by Mr. Wilson to wish everyone Happy Holidays from him as well.
Okay, I believe we are adjourned. Yes.
Okay, so those board members who are joining in a group picture, let's do that right now. Let's do that first.